All right, first of all, we're going to come to order here pretty quick. You can stand against the back wall, that's okay. You can't stand against these interior walls. Fire marshal, the, sorry, fire chief in this case will ask you to move. So if you could find a seat, we do have overflow in the carnation room next door with video connection here. So it looks like we're coming to order pretty quickly. Good, thank you. Are we okay in the back room? Jordan, but from a fire standpoint, I'm asking. But you guys can all hear me? Back row can hear me? Just fine? Cool. Okay. So we'll call this meeting to order now. And first up is roll call.
Councilmember San Antonio.
Present.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Councilmember O'Hara is here. Deputy Mayor Lyons is absent. And then Mayor Ehlers?
Here.
Let the record show, all members of the council are present with the exception of Deputy Mayor Lyons.
Okay, if you're able, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So today, I like to think you're all here to hear me speak. So maybe by the end of it, you, there won't be as many people here. So you know, this is all, no, I'm kidding. So we've got two special presentations and proclamations today. First one is, I'm going to repeat the State of the City address so that anybody, we did it for a fundraiser for the chamber, and tonight it'll go out on our regular channel. It'll be available for free for anybody that wants to hear it. It's probably about thirty, thirty-five minutes, so I'll make it as quickly as I can. And then we have a proclamation for Arbor Day after that. After that, we'll have oral communications. I'm going to give you a heads up that there are fourteen people? Sixteen, okay. So anybody beyond seventeen, eighteen, nineteen that say come in, go at the end of the meeting. And the first sixteen that are here now, two minutes each, so I'm going to knock it down from three to two. The reason we do that is we reserve thirty minutes at the beginning of the meeting for oral communications, and that's stuff that's not on tonight's agenda. And that way, we stay fair to the people, like, a lot of people here to see the scheduled agenda, and we want to get to that in a timely fashion. So what we're going to do is knock it down from three to two minutes, and take the first sixteen, and then any future oral communications will go at the end of the meeting. With that, let's, and then we will get into consent calendar, which are routine items. That should go pretty quickly. And then we'll move on to item ten A, which is the appeal of the Sugarman approval. And then ten B will come after that, which is a general plan amendment for the self-realization fellowship. So that's the way the night will go. I'll start with the, with the speech, so try and stay awake. That doesn't go any taller, of course. Can you, can you hear me again? I'll do one more sound check in the back, back of the room here? No, so-so. Can we crank this up a little? Okay, now I really have to be coordinated. I have to operate the, this, turn pages, but we'll, we'll go at it. So thank you, thank you, everyone. You know, as I said last week, I presented this to a, to the chamber for the State of the City. I'm doing it again, as I said, so that everyone can, can hear what, where we're going, our vision and some of the issues facing the city, and some of the goals that I have for the new council. So Encinitas is special. We, we live in paradise. I think most of you probably know that. The trick is, we got to keep that word from getting out. I think too many people are learning about how great it is here. They're all coming here, traffic, you know, surf lineup's getting filled, so you got to promise me not to tell your friends. So we'll, we'll keep moving forward. But that means the fundamental question facing us is how to maintain our slice of paradise so that what we love about this town stays the same. And, and before we get too far, well, I want to thank city staff, because city staff, the, the council doesn't do anything, really. It's the city staff that gets it done. We like to take the credit for it, but the city staff is the people who get it done. And I really want to thank them for all the work you do and, and really make the city work. And, and then I would have been thanking my wife right here in the previous one, but she didn't come tonight, because she would only, only go through this once, and that, that was enough for her. But I usually joke that I'm still not sure whether or not I got her vote. And I'm hoping, I'm hoping this, this time, that when I run for reelection, that she will vote for me, but, but we'll see, time will tell. So, there we go. So in my opinion, Encinitas is the best city in the state, if not the country. And we have many opportunities to keep it that way. And my fellow councilmembers, Luke Schaefer from District One, Jim O'Hara from District Two, Deputy Mayor Lyons, Joy Lyons of District Three, and our newest council member here, Marco San Antonio of District Four, we all recognize we have some work to do. And it's funny, because one of the things that you get issued as a new, new mayor, we all get rose-colored glasses. So, so wow, all the problems are gone. Everything's good news, right? Usually what you hear from the dais is a lot of good news. Well, I'm an engineer, I'm a little more practical, we're going to dispense with these. You're going to hear tonight, not only my vision, but some of the opportunities and problems we're facing. Because if we don't focus on some of the problems, we won't get better. And we, this group, wants to make it better. And I think you do, too. So, so with that, we'll, we'll move on, using a little more critical eye, looking at the accomplishments. And are you with me? Everybody? So one of the first steps that I'm taking to get us ref, get us refocused, and refocused on our general plan, how many people have even heard of the general plan for the city? Wow, actually, more people than I ever thought, great. It's our guiding document. It's literally our constitution. It was first adopted, it's been updated, but it was first adopted in 1989 after we incorporated in 1986. And at some point, the general plan started taking a backseat to what was called a strategic plan, and the strategic plan was being updated each year. Well, that's not much of a strategic plan. If you update your strategy every year, it's not a strategy, it's a tactical plan, really. And so what, beginning this year, we're going to put a section in every staff report for the council that talks about the general plan alignment. And, and that's so important. Most cities in California do that already. In fact, the planning commission reports already do that, and have always done that. And I don't know when the city council got off that track, but it'll get us back focused on the original general plan, and we'll follow through on those goals and those policies. So with that, we'll talk a little bit about my top priorities. And, and these are the top priorities, you heard the same priorities during the campaign. But number one is local control. And I don't think I'm overstating it when I say the state has been usurping our local zoning control, and that's one of our biggest issues. And that much is clear, and, and as of yet, we haven't found a way to meet all these state housing mandates that are causing these large developments you see around town, without taking away a serious amount of community character and the, the essence, remember the, how the paradise we have, we seem to be giving up in, in large part to these, these mandates. So we need to consider how projects affect surrounding neighborhoods, as well as the entire community, evaluating things like traffic, emergency preparedness, environmental impacts, and even the, the character of our town. A recent, we have many recent examples, and I don't believe they meet our standards, the ones that we had adopted in our general plan. And I'm hopeful that we can take back control of things like our regional housing needs assessment, if you've heard of RENA, R-H-N-A. And we want to make those decisions in Encinitas by Encinitans. And I'll go, I'll go into a little more detail now with the, the other two also. With local control, it, this needs to happen because the state doesn't know Encinitas like we do. And I'll draw your attention to the logo. And in the logo, it's, it's a graphical representation of, of our vision for Encinitas, and it's been around since we incorporated. It's got a bluff, it's got a valley view, it's got ocean views. I don't see any six and seven-story buildings in there, but I'm beginning to see them here. And what this shows, we, notice how it nice graphically fits in with the picture of Encinitas in the background. And so we need to defend this. And we, we need to defend it against the state usurping this authority. So for too long, the state has mandated zoning changes, and I think we all have projects that come to mind. I'm going to flip to, this is a photo simulation of the Goodson project, which I think should be the poster child against, yeah, I, I don't know anybody that likes this project in town. Not at all. It is too big in the wrong place. And this is one of twelve projects, similar, not quite all this big, some bigger, some smaller. But right now, we are, we have twelve of these projects in active development. They're either approved and in construction, or starting to be occupied. They're in construction, or they're in approval, and going through the approval process. And that's a lot of change for Encinitas. Also, it's not just large projects. How many people here know about SB nine, the Senate Bill nine? Wow, that's actually more than I have seen, you're a well-informed crowd here. SB nine is enacted, it is law, and it permits, most residential lots can now be subdivided to two lots with two duplexes. So where, and even below the minimum density, so if you live in a fifth of an acre, or quarter acre, or a half acre zone, you can subdivide below that. You can put then two duplexes, which is four total units, with each one of those duplex units, you can add an ADU. That's eight units. It is the law, it is enacted, it is signed off by the governor, it's been in place since 2022, in fact. And we're just now seeing them come through. So not only big projects, like you see behind me, but small projects, infill, next door, house burns down, it can be replaced by multiple units on that quarter acre, tenth acre. It, it's crazy. Do we need more housing? Yeah, we, we do for our children and wage workers, but I don't think SB nine is the right way to do it. I think it's, and, and here's the worst part. Nothing in SB nine requires lower-income housing. Let me repeat that. Not a thing in SB nine. It's just a giveaway to developers and people who want to take advantage of our high-value land, and they want to build more housing. No requirement that they provide any lower-income, deed-restricted housing, so. So I'll move on to my other priorities. Homelessness. And so another opportunity to improve our city is to reduce homelessness and get our homeless population safely off the streets. Now, the city has two complementary obligations. One, to enforce our laws against infractions such as public drunkenness, defecating in public, camping on public property, threatening behavior, and petty theft. And two, to provide compassionate care and treatment for those experiencing homelessness within our city boundaries. Two recent changes in the law will help us on the law enforcement side. Proposition thirty-six, the Homeless Drug Addiction and Theft Reduction Act, was passed in November and went into effect in December, so it's already in effect. It passed with an overwhelming sixty-eight point four percent of the vote. I mean, that's a landslide, that, that was great. And it amended and restored punishment for certain repeated drug and theft offenses. So you, you get two free, and then the third one is when it kicks in. And while retaining judicial discretion. So it restores the judge's option to mandate treatment in lieu of jail time. So I think this is a really good improvement, very significant improvement. The other change was a U.S. Supreme Court decision on a Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals ruling in the case, in a case in Grants Pass, Oregon. And basically, the Supreme Court's decision restored our cities and all cities in Ninth Circuit Court, which is the West Coast, the ability to enforce anti-camping bans on city property. So like in parks, on street, street sidewalks, that type of stuff. And those, those two enforcement will help our law enforcement bring some order back and help encourage the, the homeless, especially the ones that are on, on drugs and incapacitated, to get mandatory treatment, or, or they have to serve jail time. So that's a good thing. However, I always remind everybody that homelessness is not a crime in and of itself. If they commit a crime, that's a crime, but being homeless is not a crime. And we have an obligation to treat homeless with compassion and offer services that help them transition back into society. We do this through a combination of public, or public services and public-private partnerships. One example is our Homeless Outreach Protective Enforcement, or HOPE for short, team that contacts our homeless and attempts to get them into shelter and safely off the street. And we added, proud to say, last year, we added two additional HOPE officers so that we could have coverage over weekends, so we can basically have around-the-clock coverage with the team. Another area, this is a kitchen from the Buena Creek Navigation Center. It's a very important project that is part of our solution for homelessness. So it gives us twelve dedicated beds for us, for that HOPE team, to place homeless people that don't have a place to go, where we can wrap them with services and, and get them the services while we're trying to figure out how to get them permanent housing through, remember, the public-private partnerships, the county is another area. And so this gives us a place where we can, I like to call it triage, the, the homeless. And it, and it's been near capacity most of the time since we opened it. We opened it just one year ago last week, so it's been in operation for one year. And we did this in cooperation with the City of Vista, and also with Senator Catherine Blake Spear's office. She gave us quite a bit of funding towards this, so I thank them for that. In summary, with the new legislation, new dedicated sheriff's officers, and our community partners, I'm optimistic we will be able to reduce homelessness on our streets while enhancing our sense of security throughout Encinitas. My other basic priority, or other priority is basic infrastructure. How many people live near a street that looks like this in Encinitas? Yeah, too many. So one of the things that, that I am focusing on, and we just had a budget discussion from four till six P.M. today, and we talked about putting extra money into basic pavement. So that's great, we're, we're headed down the right path. As a city, I feel we should invest first in basic infrastructure, and later, before we invest in beauty or vanity projects, beautification or vanity projects. We need to invest in basics like repairing pavement, rehabilitating storm drains, fixing locadia flooding, implementing quiet zones, and at-grade crossings. These are all basic safety and fundamental infrastructure that a city is responsible for. This is my favorite chart. I share this every time I can. This is called the Pavement Condition Index, or PCI, and that's from, measured from the worst pavement at zero up to a hundred is brand-new pavement. And we were at in 2018, seventy-four. And it's been dropping. We're currently at sixty-nine, and if you look at the trend, it is down. And it's projected to hit sixty-five if we continue to invest at the current rate we're investing. And basically, what we've been investing is what we're given from the state and from the county, but not adding to it any additional funding. And so one of the things that I am proposing, and I proposed it earlier tonight, is that we put an extra million of general funds into this, and at least arrest the decline, and hopefully start it back up. And so as we go forward, this is a long-term investment. Invest in pavement now, and you'll pay less later for maintenance. Let's see. Another infrastructure issue is aging and rusting storm drains. So I took this picture, that is not a new art piece for one of our parks, it really isn't. I'll draw your attention to the rusted-through holes. This is the, the pipe, the corrugated steel pipe that's used for storm drain all around Encinitas. This happened to be down at Lake Drive, if you remember when we had the sinkhole down there. This was the, the stuff they pulled out. This is pretty typical of what I've seen all around town, that you get those holes. You can imagine, as they get bigger, eventually the pipe collapses, and then it washes out a hole, the foundation of the, of the roads. And I just took that picture because I thought it, it just spoke volumes to me. Most of our, our storm drains are fifty to sixty years old, and they need to be lined, re-lined. It turns out that you can, that you can actually re-line them in place if they haven't collapsed, and it costs half as much. And more, more importantly, it lasts just as long as a brand-new pipe, as a brand-new reinforced concrete pipe. So for half the cost, we could be re-lining them, spend a little money ahead, and we'll save money in the end. So it's fiscally more prudent to spend the money to re-line. And, and I proposed tonight that we, at, at the earlier budget meeting, that we add more money. This is one of the sinkhole failures we had, just to give you an idea of the scale with that excavator sitting there. That's how much dirt washed out and down that, it was, it was crazy. This was several million dollars of repair. Several million. And we're only spending a quarter million, or we had been, only spending a quarter million on repairing storm drains before that, per year. Yet, in one year, two years ago, we had this plus five others, for a total of three-point-seven million, that we had to spend in emergency repairs. Again, it, it's fiscally more prudent, spend the money upfront. Another area of basic infrastructure is flooding. This is Vulcan, I took this photo, too. I, I like to go out and spend evenings watching rainstorms. I'm so serious about this that I went out, we had a squall come through, what, two weeks ago? And I went out at seven P.M., I went back out at ten P.M., I went back out at two-thirty A.M. to see where it was flooding, have a standard route of all the standard flooding locations, to see how bad they are. I've gotten so serious about this, I even went out and bought boots. So I mean, this, this is, and I'm threatening, one of the budget items will include boots for the entire council and a few key staff members, so, you know. We, we really need to address flooding locadia. And so we did some fixes last year where we added some pumps, and we are able to mitigate some of the downstream flooding, and I think we're in a good place to last without, you know, unless we get hit by another five-hundred-year storm, those are, those are pretty hard to handle. But, but pumps require people, round-the-clock shifts to man them and run them, and we want to get out of that business, and we want to basically bury the pipes, or put in new pipes and, and get that fixed. And ultimately, we'll need fifty-one million dollars, is the current estimate, to do that. Wow, that, that sounds like a lot of money, because it is. And, but another way to look at it is five million dollars per year for ten years. So what we need is a committed council that will stay the, the long game and, and get through it, and spend five million. So again, tonight, I, I recommended five million for this year, and we'll do a partial fix, and we'll keep working that year after year. Another element of our infrastructure is safer train crossings, and also quiet zones. I'm a proponent of the at-grade crossings because I'm a proponent of the at-grade crossings because they make sense and it's the most cost-effective way to make the crossings safer. We also need them to be quieter. You know, every time I go down here and you hear the train coming, you know, we have quite a few residents that are subjected to blaring train horns, 110, 120 dB as you're standing there or across the street even. And we should be able to make it quieter so those people don't get woken up all times of the day and night, right? This happens at least 30 times a day, plus Amtrak, plus freight trains. So it could be almost 50 times a day where, and including 2:30 in the morning. They'll come in the middle of the night blasting that horn. So it's about time we got a quiet zone done. And moving on, there are quite a few other areas. One of the things I campaigned on was keeping L7 as a park. This council is committed to turning that into a park. We already, what do you, I don't know how you say, we declared it unsurplus. Previous council had declared it surplus, we undid that. And now we're looking at putting money into making it a real park. Beacons Beach, I'd like to go through the, it's always disappointing. We recently completed a project where we pulled back the parking lot because there was a fault line right there. We lost some parking spaces, and we're all, I think a previous council, this council is sad anytime we lose parking at the beach, but it was necessary for safety. But I am committed to maintaining the natural path, the slope path down to the beach, and quickly restoring it if it's damaged in any sort of slide in the future. It's been there for a long time. It's something that is so unique to Lucadia and to Beacons in particular, that nowhere else in North County do we have that. And so we need to keep it, and I'm not for a, what was it? Somebody in the audience, when we were considering one time, called it a Las Vegas Skyway to the beach. That was proposed at one time, $5 million, and I led the charge to kill it at Planning Commission back several years ago. Another accomplishment is we also recently completed sand replenishment as part of our 50-year plan that widens our beaches and protects against erosion and storm drainage while improving public safety because of, and it also improves our recreation at the beach. This is a collaborative project with our state and with the City of Slanta Beach, and it shows what can be accomplished when we put in place long-term solutions. See that reoccurring theme? Long-term, basic infrastructure. However, when this project was approved, for some reason, Lucadia and Beacons and North was not included. And so I am committed to finding additional and opportunistic sources of sand for those beaches, for the beaches of Beacons and North. It's a safety issue as much as anything. So, and as I said, sand replenishment serves our residents in multiple ways. It is necessary to support our enjoyment of the beach and the ocean, and while also critical to bluff stability and slowing bluff collapse. This project addresses multiple problems with a single solution. Anytime I can do that, I get double for my money. On a smaller scale, the natural beauty of our town is undeniable, and it spans coastlines to canyons and every space in between. We continue to earn the Tree City designation from the Arbor Day Foundation, and our community cares about the environment. This is an example here of the Canary, the iconic Canary Island palm at Moonlight Beach. It was actually infested with palm weevil, and we said, no, that can't go. You know, so the city, the staff, again, staff did the work, we'll take the credit, right, guys? But we got it treated, and now we should be able to keep that palm there. You know, you've seen a lot of them dying everywhere else. In addition to our environment, we have a community that cares about arts and preserving history. It'd be hard to walk around the city without seeing evidence of this. And of course, we recently opened the long-awaited Pacific View Arts Center, which will be a beacon for the arts and for many, many years to come. The classes and event calendars are bustling, and the nice thing about this, it actually offloaded some classes from the community center, which, if you've ever tried to get a room at the community center and rent it, you're, there's a lot of competition. So we needed the capacity regardless. The city purchased this land and the building and funded the restoration of this classic 1950s building. I toured it when I first got on council, and I was struck by the quality of the construction, whether it was the heavy windows which we restored or the wood, it was all immaculate. But the concrete floor is the one that struck me. It was just beautiful. That thing was poured 70 years ago, and I would love to know who poured it, because they did, to have it in this, it almost looked polished, and it hadn't been polished yet. It was that clean. And it just shows you the value of restoring and maintaining, preserving these historic buildings. And then on the same lot, we've got the one-room schoolhouse that the Encinitas Historical Society operates. So this is a case where we have the arts and we're repurposing historic buildings to support other functions within the city. I think that's a win-win situation. With the recent wildfires impacting Los Angeles and South San Diego County, it's critical that we stay focused on making our public safety personnel, making sure they get everything they need to continue protecting our community. Fire Station 1, located downtown, and Fire Station 6 in Alvenheim are top of my mind. We recently made the decision that the Pacific View site, oh, I need to preface it, Old Fire Station 1 was condemned due to seismic issues, and we had to move that crew up to Lucadia, across the tracks, and so it's response time to downtown, which is where most of our calls are, especially during the summer. It's longer, and so it's not a good long-term solution. So we had to find a place while we were waiting to rebuild Fire Station 1, we had to find a place that we could house a temporary Station 1. And since we already owned the property, when we looked through several different opportunities, Pacific View, an unused corner of Pacific View became ideal. You can see in the upper right there, in that unused corner, is where we're going to put a temporary fire station and a two-bay temporary engine house. And, you know, the, and then if we do it right, we saved money by not having to pay rent for the land, but we also may be able to reuse these temporary stations, the temporary buildings, for a future Fire Station 6 out in Alvenheim. So right now, we're in a rented facility, and we'd like to get a full engine bay out there at some point. So long-term, again, planning long-term, we want to get Fire Station 1 up to code, make it safe, rebuild it, and then also look at acquiring and implementing Fire Station 6 first as a temporary, and then ultimately having a permanent structure out there, all with the goal of increasing public safety. Okay. This one, this one actually got an audible groan from people. I was, I was, I was a little surprised even, and I would be remiss if I did not address Santa Fe Drive Streetscape tonight. The council recently paused work on Santa Fe Streetscape when concerns about road geometry and safe traffic flow arose. The new council saw enough evidence to raise serious concerns and voted to pause and let the street operate for a couple of months so we could all observe the flow. We agreed that the striping would be installed, the orange cones would be removed, and the road would be open to traffic and parking for two months while school was in session. It's very important that we get this, watch it while school's in session for pickup, drop-off. We want to see how it works. Our goal is for everyone, regardless of preferred mode of transportation, and that includes cars, to be able to travel safely, but we cannot lose sight of what drivers need. And we have a lot of people driving to drop kids off, pick them up at SDA in particular, plus we have a hospital down the street, and you may have seen, we have a doctor that lives at one end of Santa Fe and has had trouble making it to deliveries, OBGYN, at Santa Fe. It would take him, you know, 20, 20, 25 minutes to get through the congested traffic during the construction. But we have to, we need to make safer roads for students, for pedestrians, for cyclists, for vehicles, but we also need to be realistic about impacts to traffic flow and emergency response rate. And so we're going to take a look, see how it works, and have a public meeting like this. You're all welcome to come to, and probably, what, mid-May is what we said tonight. So we've heard your feedback, and I think we want, we're adapting accordingly. So, City Hall, improve service and transparency. At our core, we think of ourselves, I think we all do, as a friendly city, and we want the city staff and the functions here to be the same way. We have a wonderful staff, and they truly care about our community, but in some cases, we're not always seamless to work with. I even hate to ask the question, how many people have had trouble with pulling permits? But I probably see too many hands. So we have an opportunity to improve, and one example is permit processing. I've received many complaints over my last two years on council. And we, I won't even make excuses for why it happened, but we need to fix it. And I think with our new city manager, Jennifer Campbell, and our new council, we'll be focusing on organizational goals, objectives, improved processes that should streamline permitting and city services. The goal is to improve transparency and throughput. And the key area will be focused, this is a key area in planning in particular, planning and probably engineering, that we'll be focusing on in the year ahead. This is a way, something good that's been done in the past, and it's called the My Encinitas app. How many people have My Encinitas app? Everybody else should get it. We have a goal to get more people. Why is this good? I'm going to give you an example. This all, basically, if you submit requests to the city, like a sidewalk's got a, something needs grinding on it, or a pothole needs repairing, or you see a homeless person even, it'll get routed to the correct department. It comes in, it goes into a database, it gets tracked, and it gets followed up on. And so this is, this helps the city staff work because they know how the information's flowing into them. They don't lose an email, they don't lose, it's into the database right away. I'll give you an example. I was driving down El Cometa Real, and there was a pile of dirt, and I mean a dump truck pile of dirt, on the sidewalk, over the bike lane, and partially into the travel lane. It was obviously not safe, and somebody had probably illegally dumped it there, certainly illegally dumped it there. And by the time I got home, I forgot about it, but I got a call from a constituent and said, hey, can you do something about that? And I thought, you know what? You can help me. Try the My Encinitas app and see if it works. And I got them to download it, they did it. They called me the next day and said, it's gone. Now, I can't promise one day every time, but it showed me that, I wanted to make sure, my reason for having them do it, I didn't want a city council member request going in there and getting flagged, and we do that. I wanted to make sure it worked for everybody. And so far, I do that quite often. And obviously, and I use it, too. If I see something, I'll take a picture, geo-tag it, put the, you know, hit the right category, and away it goes. And then, last item, I'm getting down there. Supporting local businesses. We like to foster a healthy business environment. That's another basic that I would be remiss not to mention. To me, supporting businesses means encouraging a mix of restaurants, stores, and services, and of course, investing in infrastructure. There's that theme again. This year, we saw a few businesses open, and we continue to be a community that supports our local shops. In the future, I'd love to see us embrace a broad spectrum of businesses in Encinitas. The citizens, I believe citizens, want more than a downtown based on coffee and alcohol establishments. They want specialty stores, shops, small offices, a full spectrum of services. My goal is, and always will be, to make it easier for folks to do business in Encinitas, in and with Encinitas. With the help of organizations like the Chamber of Commerce and our Main Street Associations, I think as a city, we're luckier than most. Our community believes in the spirit of entrepreneurship and supports their fellow Encinitans, whether it's the farmer's market, the storefront, or even online. Our business community is a main component of what makes Encinitas the city we love. And so I know everyone in the room will join me in this sense of optimism. Almost done here. So as a 40-year resident, I believe our city is paradise. I really do. I mean, I joke, my wife has always said, I could take a job anywhere in the country I wanted to, just send the check here, and she and the kids will be fine, so, you know. Our main role in governing the city is to keep it that way, and we have, it absolutely can be done. And there's an old Henry Ford quote you'll hear me say, "Whether you think you can or you think you can't, you're right." I can say, I say we can preserve our Encinitas paradise, and I am committed to achieving that goal. If we give up, we lose. I won't give up. And so it just takes a practical approach. It's about supporting our businesses, investing in infrastructure, letting the beauty of our town speak for itself. And ultimately, it's also about ensuring that we have control over important decisions in Encinitas so that we have a metered approach to development, work to solve the root cause of homelessness, and uphold our laws for the benefit of everyone. With that in mind, I want to end on a note of extreme optimism for our future. We have significant opportunities to enhance the Encinitas we love. I look forward to working with you and the council, and hearing your feedback and solving problems together. Paradise is what we have, and it's up to us to keep it that way. Thank you, and now we can get on with the rest of the meeting. Thanks for putting up with us.
So we have one proclamation tonight, which Dave Knopp, who is our Director of Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts, will accept it. But I will read the proclamation, more reading, I'm sorry, so the speech goes on. So whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morgan proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is celebrated nationally in April to encourage Americans to maintain and replenish our country's orchards and woodlands, and whereas in California, we observe Arbor Day in recognition of famed horticulturalist Luther Burbank, a native from Massachusetts who brought experimental plant breeding to California. His life's labor produced hundreds of plants and trees that have contributed to the natural splendor and food production in our state. And whereas trees provide shade and beauty for our homes, neighborhoods, and communities, increase property values, enhance economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and are enjoyed by everyone, and whereas trees decorate our landscapes with rich colors, textures, and shapes, and they provide vital stability to our ecosystem by improving water and air quality, provide habitats for animals and plant life, prevent flooding and erosion, and, almost there. Whereas in Encinitas, trees are highly regarded and valued by the community, and wherever they are planted, as a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Therefore, I, Bruce Hailers, Mayor of the City of Encinitas, along with all council members, proclaim April 5, 2025, as Arbor Day in the City of Encinitas. And so, and do you, would you like to make a little announcement about the celebration?
Just quickly, you're all invited. Cardiff Sports Park, 9 o'clock, 9 to 12 on Saturday, we're going to plant 50 trees. That's our start-up there, so please join us.
for those two presentations. We'll take
We'll take about 30 minutes for oral comments, for 16 of them, two minutes each.
We're actually down to 15, so even better. Just a reminder, oral communication is for anything that's not on the agenda tonight, and I'll call you three at a time. First three speakers, Christine Schindler, followed by Natalie Satun, and then Philip Tinsman.
Christine Schindler, East Encinitas. So like before, I never get to say everything I want to say, so I'm going to say the fun thing first. Our city is great. Our city has businesses and partners in our region as well. You ask them for things, they give them to you for free. So I just want to acknowledge an effort that was made to put together Safe Route to School packages, starter kits for all our elementary schools. This is what one looks like. I created them, I've replenished them, and it's all because of our bike shops, Sandag, you know, Scripps Health, City of Encinitas, Lapbands, a lot of other partners that thankfully, for the most part, never say no. So, Bruce Ellers, wonderful to hear your state of the city. I appreciate that you thanked staff upfront. I think that's very important to do. I also want to remind everybody, Santa Fe is still under construction, so the sign that you, or the photo that you showed, showed a corridor that was under construction that had a detour, and a lot of people aren't appreciating that yet. I can't wait to see the pause and see how it functions and go from there. I want to continue the progress on streets for everyone, not just cars, but people on bikes, walking, using transit, other modes of transportation. I do thank you for your efforts, being council members. You're not highly paid, sometimes you're not highly appreciated, and you spend a ton of time. I want to welcome our city manager, so happy that you were offered the position and accepted it, an amount of time, because I don't have that extra minute.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing us proud, Marco, yesterday. I actually have some photos, slideshow. Hi, Natalie Satun, Cardiff, Mayor and Council. Actually, Santa Fe, thank you for bringing that up, actually had some car damage. I've already filed a claim with the city. A situation happened at Scripps Encinitas ER two weeks ago. So we not only have a quality of life issue here in Encinitas, we have a potential loss of life for two patients that I witnessed. An enraged homeless man was accompanied by three deputies, who was brought in by ambulance for mental health or drug-induced fit. For more than two hours, the entirety of the ER was subject to the man yelling to the top of his lungs. One patient in the hall was experiencing a pulmonary embolism and a heart attack. And another lady coded while the physician treating the deranged man was assaulted. The man was finally transported through the hall with a spit hood on, along with three deputies. Because the man had a spit hood on, San Diego sheriffs had to be with him for that, and, which removed three deputies from the streets for two hours. It turns out, the man was brand-new in town and had no ID. We have a serious life issue here. When Encinitas residents who need emergency medical services have to compete with a treatment of homeless being treated. Carl's Badges passed a strict ordinance for illegal camping, which will push people to us. I looked online, and in the last six months, most neighboring communities have also done the same. Vista arrested, Escondido arrested, National City arrested, and of course, San Diego is moving everything. We have the reputation for being so welcoming, and now we also have the CRC advertising Encinitas for services down at the San Diego MTS trolley and bus stops. We really need our reputation to change, not to be so welcoming, because we are suffering a life burden. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Philip Tinsman, and I put on a cycling event called the Belgian Waffle Ride, along with my partner, Michael Marks. We just moved the event to the Del Mar Polo Fields, and it will be next month. It's a three-day cycling festival, and on Sunday is our really large event, but for Saturday, we added a new road component, which is a more of a recreational grand fondo. We have a couple hundred riders. We unknowingly, with the new venue, put in the permit here nine days after the 45-day limit. So therefore, I just got notified yesterday afternoon that our permit submission got returned, and he recommended that we come and talk to the council. It's like, what we're asking for is just the, just some leniency on putting our permit in. It is a rules-of-the-road, passing-through Encinitas, we use about 10 miles of Encinitas, and we are supported by many Encinitas businesses, such as Cadent Cyclory, The Lost Abbey, Better Buzz, The Garage Salon, like, and the list goes on. So, I think that's about it.
And we can't respond from up here. So, the whole idea behind oral comments is there are things that are not on the agenda. The open meeting laws say the only things we can discuss are things on the agenda, so everyone in the city gets notified and has a fair chance. So, we can refer you to staff, is about it.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Next three speakers, Ron Rodriguez, followed by Dave Dean, and then Trina Priest.
Good evening, Mayor Ellers, District Council members. My name is Ron Rodriguez. I'm the Vice Commander for 416. Next to me is my first vice, George Serhan. The reason we're here this evening is to invite the city council and staff on April the 6th, Sunday at 1:00 PM, celebrate birthday party for Royce, Captain Royce Williams will be 100 years old. Captain Royce Williams himself, during the Korean War, shot four Russian MiGs, four Russian MiGs. When he returned back to safety, they noticed that he had 256 bullet holes in his plane. They told him, due to the Russian conflict, keep quiet, because several years later, it was brought up. He was awarded the Silver Cross last year by Congressman Issa, and right now, in President Trump's desk, awaiting signature for Medal of Honor. Also, if possible, also if possible, would it be, if we could, the city could do a proclamation for Royce on April the 6th, Proclamation Day for April 6th, for Captain Royce Williams?
I'll refer it to staff with a smile. I can't respond.
Yeah, I know, yeah. But I'm just, you were suggesting, if it's possible, do a proclamation, so we can, if the mayor would be there, could proclamation to Royce Williams.
Repeat the time and place, so, I'm hearing questions.
The time of the party?
It's April the 6th, 1:00 PM, 210 West F Street. I hope everybody can join there, for, thank you very much. Thank you, thank you.
Good evening, Dave Dean from Dave's Rock Garden, and I'm here this evening to invite you to come out to the Rock Garden on Monday, March 31st, Caesar Chavez Day. And at that meeting, we're, at that event, we are going to be having a ribbon-cutting ceremony for a new Rock Garden Library, a small library that was dedicated to the Rock Garden by San Diego Council, San Diego Library Group, and it's pretty special. I would like the next picture, please. I'd like to have you all come out, if you can, either on March 31st, it's at 12 noon, and check out the garden in the small library. It is absolutely spectacular. The library has given us both children's and adult books, and the tagline for the garden is "Bringing Unity to the Community." And we can go on to the next picture. And here, we can see the small monkey that will be on top of the library. And the artwork that is done on the library box itself is absolutely unbelievable, some of the finest in the country, I would say. So, if you could come out for the event, we'd like to invite council, staff, and the community. All of you would be welcome. We have over 8,000 rocks painted in the garden now, from over 127 countries around the world, and it is truly a special place for our little community, and we'd love to see you there. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Good evening, Mayor Ellers and Encinia City Council. I'm Trina Priest, a middle school teacher and mother of three teens. Tonight, I want to highlight an important development from the City of El Cajon that I believe Encinitas could follow. A couple of weeks ago, El Cajon made history by becoming one of the first cities in the state to specifically ban the sale of vaping devices that are disguised as everyday items, like pens, smartwatches, and even fidget spinners. This new law is designed to protect our children and ensure that they are not exposed to vaping devices, hidden and seemingly harmless objects. El Cajon's law carries significant penalties for violators, with fines of up to $2,500 per offense, and the possibility of losing a city business license for repeated violations. Local school districts have been vocal about the issue, pointing out that these devices are being used by kids as young as middle schoolers. What's even more alarming is these devices aren't just for nicotine, they can also be used to vape cannabis. This is a public health issue and an education issue. Schools are already spending thousands of dollars to educate our kids, but these devices make it nearly impossible for students to stay focused and stay safe in school. Encinitas could protect our youth from the dangers of vaping and prevent further harm to our schools, and ensure that tobacco retailers are held accountable for their actions. Thank you for your time.
Next three speakers, Chris Ryan, followed by June Hansberger, and then Erin Hebshi.
Gentlemen, I'm here to talk to you about promises made to the community of Lucadia 23 years ago, specifically the Lucadia Boulevard, Higia Roundabout, and how it looks then and how it looks now. You're going to have to go faster, because I only have two minutes. Thank you so much. Okay, so basically, it looks the same, no complete sidewalks, no trails on either side, no protected bike lanes, no safe crossing, no sidewalks to Fulvia Street, and no landscaping except for what the community has planted. July 17, 2002, city approved a concept plan directed staff to split the project into two phases. I had two kids, ages two and three months old. May 9, 2007, contract awarded for construction of Phase 1. Now I have three kids, two, six, and eight, two at Polacki Central Elementary School. November 21, 2019, Planning Commission approved design review permit and modification of a coastal development permit, and also directed city council to try to complete pedestrian improvements on both sides of Lucadia Boulevard as part of the next round of funding for the CIP. My kids are freshmen at UCLA, a junior in high school and in eighth grade. I had 13 years of Polacki Central Elementary School with no roundabout, no complete sidewalks, no safe routes to school, and we didn't even have the benefit of a gentleman, friendly gentleman with a flag. June 12, 2024, city council votes to reassign money for the roundabout to the Stormwater Drain Project, which I supported because, partly because Councilman, then Councilman Ellers said funds were being temporarily given up, $2.8 million, and he supported restoring the money as soon as practical and feasible. There's my kids, full adults. March 19, 2024, staff recommended Lucadia Boulevard be one of the two projects for a $3.5 million grant that's possible, for $20,000 to try to get that grant. It was not one of the two projects that was approved for the $20,000 grant. My kids, full adults. It's time, 23 years later, promises made, and it's time for promises to be kept.
Hi, I'm going to go fast too. I'm June Hansberger, lived in Lucadia for 30 years, and I've been, this is not my presentation, so you're going to start my time over, please. This is not my presentation. It's okay, I'll wait. But I have lived here for 30 years, and we have been fighting for these roundabouts for a long time. Encinitas has been waiting 23 years for a completed project. This is a project about community safety for all of Encinitas. 15,000 cars drive down this road every single day. Let's make it safer for drivers and pedestrians. Next slide. Here are some views of what we have. This is how kids walk to school. A woman was hit right there at that corner. Next slide. You can see more, traffic backs up at all of these stop signs. This current situation of a four-way stop is not good. Pedestrian hit right there. Next slide. Here are more views. This is how we get around town. It is not good, and we have been asking for years. Next slide. So, why a roundabout and sidewalks here? Next slide. Roundabouts are significantly safer. If you look at the data, people that get hit will live. Next slide. Roundabouts reduce congestion. If you look at this traffic, it is backed up in both directions on our way to the beach. Again, 15,000 people every day drive this road. Next slide. Roundabouts lower speeds. They will make it safer for everybody entering and exiting on their way to school, and just going on our daily routes, because the flagman is only there two hours a day. Next slide. Roundabouts add, will add sidewalks up to Fluvia. We have no sidewalks. Again, safe route to school, no sidewalks. Next slide. Roundabouts improve crosswalks. This is transformative. The ones at Higia, or pardon me, High Metis, and down at Hermes, let you stop in the middle of a road where 15,000 cars are driving every day. They give you a little safe landing in the middle. It also will give us four crosswalks, not just one. Again, safe routes to school. Next slide. So, it also saves money because we don't spend as much on emissions, and it helps with our climate goal. Next slide. So, we need this. Please prioritize funding. You took it away, we want it back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, council, mayor. My name's Erin Hebshi, Lucadia, District 1. I don't have a great presentation like that, that was super compelling, but I did want to say, I am a parent and volunteer at Polacki Central. I help the school with Safe Routes to School. A huge number of our families do cross right there, from North Lucadia, that's how we get to school. And we want that safe roundabout, we want to be able to get our kids out of a car, so parents can say, hey, just like when I was a kid, you can go to school on your own, I don't have to drive you. We want, going back to Safe Routes to School in general, Jim, completely sympathize with your 30 minutes down to the beach, okay? Let's, I'll drive my bike to make up that time, it's a lot quicker on bike to circumvent the traffic there, but I understand most people won't be willing to do that, because it's sketchy. So, I've heard suggestions about trying to get other routes across from one side of town to another, from the beach, from east to the beach. I know, in a previous iteration of active transportation plan, there was a bridge at Union Street. Where'd that go? Let's reconsider some sort of safe connection east-west. Last thing I wanted to bring up, non-mobility, before I go, is affordable housing. The Planning Commission just released an amazing report, a white paper, on great suggestions for how we can improve affordable housing, including following the recommendations of the Affordable Housing Task Force. I haven't heard anything from this council on how we're going to move forward on affordable housing. I did take a great walk. I did take a great walk with Luke the other day, and we talked about some creative ideas, including creative financing ideas to help get some of these things off the ground. We want small, incremental, and affordable-by-design rentals and units. Let's do it. Let's see it.
Thank you.
Next three speakers, Madison Rapp, followed by Bruce Endress, and then Scott Campbell.
Hello, good evening, mayor and city council members. I'm excited to share some information about an upcoming meeting called Advancing Smoke-Free Multi-Unit and Family Housing Policies in San Diego County. So I've been here to speak about the value and the need for smoke-free multi-unit housing before, and why we should pass that policy in Encinitas. Part of the reason is because research shows that up to 65% of the air in an apartment can come from neighboring units. Nicotine and cannabis are both drugs, and there is no safe level of secondhand exposure to it. Third-hand smoke, the toxic chemicals left behind after tobacco or cannabis is smoked, can build up on surfaces and has been shown to cause cancer, asthma, respiratory infections, and even slow fetal lung development in pregnant people. We all have the right to breathe clean, smoke-free air, especially in our homes. So here's our flyer, so I'd like to invite the city staff. There's a link here, I'll bring some more flyers over. So they're gonna be talking about Carlsbad, our neighboring city, that recently passed a smoke-free multi-unit housing policy. So they'll be covering this on Wednesday, April 9, from 10:00 to 11:30 on Zoom. And the topics will include the impact of Carlsbad's smoke-free multi-unit housing policy, the lessons they learned, and best practices for implementation, a smoke-free multi-unit housing model policy language, why it's better for business, and the importance of including all smoked products in smoke-free multi-unit housing policies, and opportunities to strengthen these smoke-free policies countywide. You also might recognize Mike Strong. He used to work for Encinitas, and he's now the Assistant Director of Community Development in Carlsbad, and he will be speaking there. So this meeting is a fantastic opportunity for the city staff to learn, collaborate, and hopefully make smoke-free multi-unit housing a priority in Encinitas. Thank you.
Thank you.
I grew up here, Encinitas is a great place. There's a couple of things that a lot of people are bringing up to me and that I am experiencing myself. El Camino Real, speeding is ridiculous. I mean, it's gotta stop somehow. And then the e-bikers, they don't wear helmets, they ride in the middle of the road, they ride wheelies in front of cars, and it's just unsafe, and it's just not right. I grew up riding bikes and nothing like that. So look out for their safety because they don't care. I was pulling out of a driveway on El Camino Real, and an e-biker was riding on the sidewalk, ran right into my truck. So it's like they've gotta stay off the sidewalks for our safeties, not only their own but ours because how are we supposed to walk on there if they're riding their e-bikes really fast? So I'm just looking out for the safety of people. I think that's about it. I don't know if there's a way that you can keep the e-bikes in their own lane, off the sidewalks, and then regular bikes in there. I don't know how to do that, but something's gotta be done because the e-bikes are just kinda taking over everything, and they don't have any limits. I mean, I'm just looking out for people's safety. So that's it.
Okay, hello, my name is Scott Campbell, I live in Encinitas District One. I live on the same street as some of the other speakers. My children made it across the street at High Meadows before there was a roundabout with no problems. Anyway, that's not what I'm here about, to talk about. I'm here to talk about the rule of law. The city has codes. Can it, will it enforce codes or change codes? In particular, Code 9.2.5 for cannabis, I ask you to add a restriction on outdoor cannabis advertising. Code 9.32 is about noise abatement. I ask the council to add a section on lighting. Code 9.55 Pilot Bike Share Program, get rid of it. We got rid of it. Code 11.10, sale and display of tobacco products, again, add cannabis to that. I never thought I was gonna get up here and talk about this stuff. I know some people talk about this every week, and I appreciate them. We're talking about CDC budgets. In order for the CRC to receive funding, they should commit to not advertising outside the city. We actually heard about this tonight. Now, I was skeptical, but, I mean, are they serving residents or are people outside the city? The Temporary Outdoor Dining Inspection Checklist covers debt coverings. I request the council to enforce that and increase inspections more than twice a year. And I'm 19 seconds quick. Thank you.
Scott, did you email that to us, too? Because you had a lot of numbers in there. It'd be helpful.
Final three speakers, Adriana Santo Tomas, followed by Jim Sprouse, and then Elena Thompson. Adriana?
Is she in the other room, perhaps?
No.
My name is Adriana, and I live in Lucadia on Sanford Street, and I have a daughter who will be starting at Polacki next year. I stand before you today as a mother deeply concerned about the safety of our children and community members who navigate our streets daily. Neighborhoods should be built for people, not cars. But here are the facts. There are about 10,300 residents in the Lucadian neighborhood of Encinitas. Yet, at the intersection of Lucadia Boulevard and Higia Avenue, approximately 15,000 cars pass through each day. This highlights a lack of safe bike paths and walkways, and a lack of adequate public transportation and school buses for our children, as much of the weekday traffic is likely parents shuttling their children to and from school. Ensuring the safety of drivers, pedestrians, and cyclists is not just a priority, it is an urgent necessity. I urge our town council to seriously consider the funding of the construction of a roundabout at the critical intersection near our elementary school. This should be part of the basic infrastructure goals that were mentioned tonight. Roundabouts have proven to be one of the most effective safety measures for intersections, significantly reducing the number and severity of crashes. This is not just about statistics, it is about the lives of our children and neighbors. One of the primary benefits of roundabouts is their ability to slow down traffic so drivers are better at yielding to pedestrians and cyclists. They feature splitter islands that serve as refuges for pedestrians, allowing them to cross one direction of traffic at a time. And for cyclists, roundabouts offer a safer alternative to navigating through high-speed traffic as the slower speeds and clearer sightlines make it easier for drivers to see and react to them. I'm sure everyone here has a story of almost hitting someone on their e-bike. By the way, I wish there were 15,000 bikes, not cars. Let's create a safer, all right, let's just please invest in that roundabout and create a safer route for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Pete, who's up next? And then after that, is it Elena?
Honorable mayor and distinguished council members, my name is Jim Sprouse, and this is Ryan Cresson with Amber Pearl. And this is either a public service announcement or a shameless plug, we're not quite sure. But as we came in today, there was a nice person talking about wildfire safety, which happens to be a huge, I saw some nods already. It's a huge issue, and there are...
Address us.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And I just hate my back people. But it's a huge issue, and it's coming up. So we are here to introduce ourselves to, and I believe, Your Honor, Mayor, we've already talked to you and some of the other members of the council, but we'll be in the community, and we'll be here addressing this issue. There are a couple of things that can be done. Please go to CAL FIRE and learn. If it's up on there, you can see there's two things you can do to defend your home. The first one is free, and please get educated. We don't have the time or the resources to go through this tonight, but you can do something called hardening your home. And real quick fact, 90% of home fires in wildfires are started because of embers, and you can do things to mitigate this risk. The other is putting a wildfire defense system on your home, which is what our company does. That was a shameless plug.
I think you nailed it.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it.
Hi, council, thank you for your time, and it's so nice to hear of your new strategy for the new year, as well as your strategic priorities. And I love that you want to protect and preserve our paradise, because I think all of us in this room want to do the same thing, including our youth and future generations. And I also like to hear that you want to support our local businesses, my own included, while protecting public safety in Encinitas and enhancing our infrastructure. But what I find really concerning and telling is that the number-two priority of this new leadership team is to focus on homelessness. And I think that's good, but paradise homelessness, 63,000 people, 100 homeless, but I agree, it is a problem. And the tentacles of the homeless industrial complex definitely have their tentacles on Encinitas. And so I would applaud your efforts to really look out for this and not let it morph and grow like we've seen in other cities throughout our state with its failed homeless policy, and make sure that our city isn't harmed, and look at some of these plans for increasing the capacity to serve more homeless in our town, and decide if that's really the right thing, because I don't think it is. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That does conclude oral communications for tonight.
Okay, great, thank you. So we don't have any new ones that dropped in? Okay, great, so nothing later. So the next item is report from closed session, but we had none, so there is no report. Is there any change to the agenda?
Just a reminder that 10C was agendized, but it had been removed from the agenda because it was legally noticed. And then moving to the consent calendar, item 8D has been polled by a member of the public.
8D. And does council have any items they want to poll?
8F has also been polled.
I have some questions on 8D, so...
8D?
Yeah, it's been polled by the public.
So it looks like I've got two polled, 8D and 8F.
I'm in a request of mine that I don't get a report from staff because I know these people are not here to go over 8D and 8F.
Yeah. And just one person pulled 8D, so I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent calendar, accept 8D and 8F.
Second.
Did I get a motion in there?
Yeah, motion to...
Okay, Luke?
Yes.
Second.
Yeah. Okay, and we'll call that question? We're waiting for the computer.
Go.
There we go.
Motion carries unanimously with Deputy Mayor Lyons absent.
Okay. And now if we could, who, we have public speakers on 8D. Who polled?
Farhad, would you like a staff report, or would you like to speak first? No.
No staff report, good. Thank you, sir.
Good to go? Yep. Hi, mayor, hi, city council, nice to see you all. I actually didn't notice that this item was on the consent calendar until today, so I think I need some of Councilmember O'Hara's diligence in looking these over. I know that you've had a good eye on finding things that seem to have fairly substantial expenditures and asking some questions about it, and I think a half a million dollar item is worth talking about. And I'm here, and I know Councilmember Schaefer and Councilmember O'Hara, you already heard me speak at one of the school liaison meetings about potential improvements that we can make in the Village Park neighborhood. I'm a District Four resident. I grew up in Village Park, I still live in Village Park, just like you grew up in Village Park, Councilmember San Antonio. And I went to the school liaison meeting on behalf of our PTA at Parkdale Lane to ask for some focus on traffic improvements that we could make at the intersection of Parkdale Lane and Village Parkway. I know for this particular item, we're looking at three improvements right down Parkdale Lane, Glen Arbor and Willow Springs, two of the intersections, the other one's at Country Haven. And the specific project focuses on putting in new pads for the ADA-compliant curbs at each of the four corners. I know this is being grant-funded, and sometimes we think of that as free money, but it's only free money insofar as what's being handed to you. It's not necessarily free money in terms of other opportunities that you have to spend it. And I know I speak on behalf of not just the PTA at Parkdale Lane, but a lot of the residents in the neighborhood, longtime ones like myself and my parents who live there, that I think you're gonna get a lot more bang for your buck looking to do safety improvements at the corner of Village Parkway and Parkdale Lane. We had a police deputy come out after the crossing guards were put in place there. Crossing guards are awesome. We love having the crossing guards there. I walk that route five days a week with my daughter on the way to school through all of these intersections, continue walking the dog around the neighborhood. The crossing guards have been great, but we still have people blowing through the stop signs at Village Parkway pretty regularly. I actually walk through that intersection pretty much every night around 8 o'clock with a friend who lives over on the Country Haven side. We see probably three or four days a week people blowing through the stop signs as well. So what I'm here to recommend is that, and we've talked to Nick Buck about this, and I cannot say enough impressive things about him, he's an asset to the staff. The suggestion that we got from both sheriff's deputy as well as city staff is to look into putting raised crosswalks across Village Parkway as a way to mitigate people blowing through the stop signs and slowly moving through the intersection. I think those are gonna go a lot further in terms of being able to serve the community there, protect the residents, protect the children that are going to school, as well as people that are walking through those neighborhoods at night, as opposed to some new construction pads that are gonna go in the three other intersections that are part of this project right now. That's all I have for you tonight. I hope you give that some consideration. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I'll hop in real quick. Earlier tonight, we did the budget, and we talked about adding up to two additional traffic enforcement because we are seeing people running stop signs citywide. And that, I walk that same intersection quite often, too. So the raised crosswalks would get some scrutiny from the fire department, especially with the station nearby. So I don't know the answer tonight, but I see Marco. Marco, would you mind if I just, for expediency, make a motion to approve this?
Actually, I didn't even have a, I just had a question, actually.
Okay, well, go ahead.
So on the photo, for the, on the Glen Arbor and Willow Spring, I just had a question about the, you have the ADA stuff on the, or the bumps on the corners. I was just wondering, sorry, next one? The one with both streets on... Sorry.
Page six.
Yeah, I'd look it up, then I'd lose my spot here.
Page six.
Was that the one?
Sorry, council member, you mentioned Willow Spring?
Yeah, this one right here, yeah. There's the bumps on the one without the crosswalk. Is there a reason there's no crosswalk to that one when there's, you know, if it's ADA, wouldn't there, should there, is there a reason there?
Yeah, this was what's included in the original grant application. We can look into this, and if there is a contiguous sidewalk adjacent to this, add these two legs to the project.
Could it have to do with the number of crossing guards? Is there a crossing guard normally at that intersection?
Yeah, but the existence of crossing guard wouldn't affect our decision to... Yeah, but the existence of crossing guard wouldn't affect our decision to mark a crosswalk there. Even without a crossing guard, we would have put it, I'm thinking it has something to do with the collision history there, the history of the collisions that was used for the grant application. But the grant is usually flexible enough. If we want to add a crosswalk to the, to the project, we should be able to.
Yeah. The only thing I noticed, we're talking about the dual intersection, right?
Yeah, the dual, yeah.
Is that it's one way southbound coming into the one, so it kind of makes sense to have one crosswalk and there's typically a crossing guard there. I've gone over and watched the school let out. And it's odd that the crosswalk's on the opposite side from the stop sign on the.
Yeah.
So it's a little weird, I think. But, go ahead.
So I wanted to just a couple of things. Per public comment, we were not presented with Village, Village Park and Parkdale Lane. And this is what we were presented with. That's why we're looking at these four intersections. Nick Buck was on staff when this recommendation came down, and he would have recommended this to the engineering department with his approval. So I, like you, think Nick Buck is an excellent, excellent person and expert in his field. And I'm sure that he chose these as important pieces of this. So I agree with you, and that's why that particular intersection is not listed on here. So I'm going to ask a question. Why is this map that I have different than the one that was presented to the Traffic Commission when they received their mission that they voted on a different map than we're seeing?
Good question, Councilmember. Initially, there were some bulbouts that were included in the original application. However, after further discussion with the fire department and the actual tests that they conducted with the Santa Fe project, it was concluded that it's better not to, especially in these areas where we have residentialals and kids that might be standing, waiting at these corners. We don't want kids to be too close to the intersection corner, so we eliminated those bulbouts from the original design.
Perfect. I appreciate the explanation. I noticed that and it kind of drew my attention very quickly, so I appreciate the explanation on that. I also wanted to bring a question to, what I have is page five in my sheet here, which is Third Street and B Street. I looked at the four-way intersection. On all of the curbs, there seems to be, there seems to be one side of the street that has ADA ramps for the crosswalks. But then another one, the other side only has one for each crosswalk. Is that because we've added these pullouts, those elbows? It wasn't clear, and I'm just looking for some clarification. I think that's what it is, but I want to make sure.
Exactly. Your observation is correct. Due to ADA reasons, there has to be a certain distance between the end point of the crossing and the ramp. So we have these bulbouts that were built, I believe, about four years ago, I want to say. Usually with these bulbouts, the double ramp is essential. It has to happen for ADA reasons.
Okay. And then I just have a request. I don't know if this would be an amendment to this or not. Is it possible to do the daylighting curb painting included in this? I didn't see that in the report, and I'm wondering if we can include that in the process of, once we do this, make sure it happens at the same time since we're there?
Yeah, absolutely. We can do that, yeah.
Super. I appreciate all those answers. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Jim. And do I have a, well, I'm going to jump in with one question. I'll make a motion to approve this item. But is there a 12th cycle coming? And how do intersections get into a 12th cycle submission for grants?
The 12th cycle is already announced, and council will hear from us very soon, I would say in a month. We had four applications. I think we're one of the only cities in the state that won all four. And about $3.5 million in grants, only a $300,000 match from the city. But the projects are various across the city, different locations, different, different natures. So you'll hear from us. So for future projects, we'll be looking at a cycle 13, but HCP is every other year.
Every other year. Okay.
And it's based on collision history and injuries and fatalities. Basically, the more injuries, you get better score for potential.
If somebody submits a suggestion now, not that it's guaranteed to go into the system and go in, what's the timing as far as the next cycle?
The next application, I would say, opens February 26.
Okay.
For a deadline of July 26.
Okay. Okay. Jim?
Does anyone have any questions? Because I'm going to move to make a motion to approve.
I already did.
But I'm going to add the amendment to check on the crosswalk and add the daylighting to it.
I'm good with that, if you'll second.
I'll second.
Anybody else? Call a question?
So just to clarify, it's staff recommendation for the resolution and then to direct staff to investigate the feasibility of daylighting at some of the red curbs that was identified by Councilmember O'Hara?
And we've, Councilmember San Antonio wanted the investigation of the crosswalk, extra crosswalk.
And we'll include that as well in the motion.
Okay.
Motion carries unanimously with Deputy Mayor Lyons absent.
Okay. We'll move on to, what was it? 8F? Thank you. And that was pulled by Councilmember Schaefer. You said you did not need a staff report, correct?
Correct. So 8F is the agreement, amendment to agree, to an agreement for professional consultant services between the city of Encinitas and Endura to add $104,000 for additional support. When you reach to the recommended action, comes out to Endura, to agree, to an agreement with Endura in substantial form for $104,000, not to exceed essentially $1.1 million. When I read that, I thought about when I go to the coffee shop and I buy a $5 coffee and they say, well, it might be $5 or it might be $55. To me, this reads as an, as an incomplete picture of a project or product. And so I want to back up on that, but I'm, and I'm going to look to see if we can bring that down and then have them come back and ask for money as they need it. But I think this is an important one to look at because I also think this is code enforcement, right? We're looking at a code enforcement contract here with a, with a consultant service. And I'm looking at $1 million annually here on this. And I know that if we're, they're spending $1 million, we're only spending $600,000 max on their employees at that point. And I'm wondering why, if we're looking at $1 million expenditure a year likely, or possibly, why, I think we need to start looking into where it is prudent for us to hire our own people, our own staff members, in a sense of saving money over time. You know, I look at this, we can, we could hire, I believe they're looking at these three individuals, is that correct? So they use three individuals, we brought in one or two, and then we did the educational costs, continuing educational costs. I believe we would save money annually, and over time that would accumulate. Is there a reason we don't go in that direction with a contract like this?
We just haven't been directed to. That's correct. We have three full-time contract inspectors currently. And just with the increase in grading permits and utility permits with our development in the city, we have a need for an additional inspector which spurred this request. And so the not to exceed amount that you referred to is a result of three full-time inspectors at the tune of $989,400.
And that's, that's what they're, they're charging us. So they're, they're paying the person, then they're taking their share, then they're paying, they're taking, they're paying the extra. So, so they're getting all the equity out of it. Like they're getting this expert level person that they're continuing education, this person on our dime.
That's their service charge, correct?
So I'm wondering, and I know this isn't, this isn't the place to do it, but this is a great example of something I believe we need to work with staff to identify where we can, where the right, we don't want to just hire people. We don't want to build a massive staff because all these demands go up and down. And I know that I've been, had that explained, and I agree with that. But clearly, this is an area, the specific one, that we're going to see grow with developments coming in, other, the next cycle of RENA numbers, all of those pieces. We're not going to see a drop in the need to do this service anytime soon. So this is a great example of where we can start to look. I know we try to avoid adding FTEs, which, which are employment hour based times for full-time staff members. But I think when it makes sense, we got to look, we can't just say we're not going to look at full-time employees and bringing them on. We need to look at, when it makes sense, then we're going to save a lot of money over course, you know, even if we only save $100,000, that's, that's a million dollars. I've heard people come and talk about the roundabout hygiene. You take the grant, you take the million dollars, and you take the, you take the sidewalk and you make it less pretty and just make it a sidewalk, and all of a sudden, bam, we've got your, we've got your roundabout. So this, a really, really good example of, maybe this area, and backing up after this, a place we should look at. I do think this, this amount, if I back up to the matter at hand, which is the one in front of us, I would like to know if there's a way we could make this not to exceed $500,000. And if they want more money, they're welcome to come up here, stand there, and ask us for it.
So the $989,000 is the cost that we're already incurring this year for the three full-time inspectors that we need. So the ask before you tonight is just for an additional $100,000 that would increase the not to exceed amount from that $989 to just over $1 million. So the additional ask is just the $100,000, and that's to add that additional inspector that we need now.
Okay. I appreciate the clarification. I definitely, that points back to the case that I was pulling out with this, which is really the biggest, most important part of pulling this out, to use that as an example for that. So I appreciate that. I'll rest.
So one of the things to remember, this is for inspection services, which we do cost recovery fees for. Second thing I would, second thing I would note is that right now, the city is going through quite a bit of large projects. I talked about them during the State of the City. And so to a degree, we're the mouse eating the elephant. And so I actually support right now using contractor method because this becomes our cost basis for our fee recovery. And most of these services, since these are for private development, are being, most of the fees are being recovered back out. So it kind of washes at this point. I would appreciate, and I think this is what you're ultimately asking for, is as part of our budgeting cycle, it would be, we, I'd like to have an analysis that would show us what this, you know, we have this cost, how much fees are we charging and potentially offsetting of the, it's roughly $1 million a year for the last year, this year, and next year. And we're talking about adding $104,000 to that, so a pretty small percentage, that's sub 1% increase for four months of, and a fourth inspector. And it's only four months. It doesn't extend into next year. So next year, we go drop back down to three. So one of the nice things about contracting is you can dial up, dial down as the demand is there. What we've shown with all these big projects going through, plus our normal load, is demand is up, I believe. And that makes sense. So I'm going to ask for, and see if this is getting to the heart of what you want to know. I'd like to see a trade-off of if we think this is going to go on long-term, what is on a per contractor or per employee basis, what would the cost, the budget difference be for the city? Is that what you're looking for? And that's a good budget question when we come back May 15.
You're absolutely on the same path as me, but I also would add, and you talked about the mitigation fees offsetting. If we're, we're going to collect the same amount of mitigation fees no matter what. So if we're paying less out because they're our employees, they're more equitable, we're actually getting.
Ultimately, our fee structure, our fee structure is based on the cost. So long-term, if it is that much cheaper, we would charge less. Because we'll go through, and I think we talked about that, you mentioned it, I think city manager mentioned fee, fee setting, and we just did that, what, a year or two, two years ago?
Yeah. So Mayor, Councilmember, so when we do set fees, obviously, the city cannot make money. So I mean, we can get up to 100% cost recovery. So when it comes to mitigation fees, that's done like per unit, that's set, whether it's sewer, traffic. When it comes to our development fees for our engineering and our development services, we do obviously have some fees that are set because we have staff that do that. So we are going to be looking at that because we are not 100% cost recovery for these items. So when looking at that, actually, we've talked to Jill, and we're not, we're maybe at 50%. So we do need to really look at that so that we are correctly recovering the cost. And we would base it off of what our actual costs are.
That's where I was going. So I appreciate the explanation.
So I'll entertain a motion?
Motion to approve of 8F.
I'll second. Okay. Got a motion and a second. And we'll vote. Call a question.
Motion carries unanimously with Deputy Mayor Lyons absent.
Okay. So, you guys need a break or we want to plow right in?
I think they want to go.
I know.
Let's go. They're ready to go.
Just checking. That's why I ask.
I don't want to get run over by the green wave.
So, okay, so we're going to hop straight into 10A, which is the Sugarman Appeal. Boy, enthusiastic crowd. So this is a public hearing to consider a timely filed appeal for case number appeal-007854-2025 of the Development Services Department Director's approval of an agricultural permit to establish a community garden, allow small animal keeping, 26 to 100 animals, small-scale agricultural production, and a temporary food stand. The property is currently developed within existing single-family residence, three-car garage, and an ADU. As for project background, here's a timeline. On October 2nd, last 2023, there was a notice violation. Subsequent March and the spring, the ag permit application was submitted. November of that year, a CPP meeting was held. January of this year, a month or so ago, the ag permit was approved. And within the last, within 10 days, Gary Phillips, the neighbor, filed an appeal in tonight's hearing. So now I'll go through each of the appeal points and staff's rebuttal to each. First point, appellant position. The appellant states that the citizen participation program meeting notice stated that the applicant proposes a community garden, a food stand, beekeeping, keeping of 100 animals, and special events with at least 30 participants. The appellant further states that these uses are not providing a community need. In summary, and further described in the staff report, staff responded with, the ag permit is limited, as stated, to 10-plot community garden, small animal keeping, less than 100 animals, small-scale ag production, and a temporary food stand. The CPP notice was consistent with the ag permit scope. There are no bees on site, and the project is consistent with the urban ag ordinance. Phillips, Gary Phillips now also states, the appellant states that the project's use of 45 parking spaces anticipates group activity which does not fit with the existing residential neighborhood. the public hearing and we'll go into council discussion and whatever action. So that's the outline. With that, we'll go to staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Elers. Good evening, council members. My name is J.D. Cho, so I'll be presenting the Sugarman agricultural permit appeal. The property is located at the eastern limit of the city at the intersection of Akeeta Lane and Fortuna Ranch Road. 3563 Fortuna Ranch Road, as you've described, it is in the rural, it is in the rural residential zone. And recently, the agricultural permit that was approved was for a 10-plot community garden, small animal keeping up to 100 animals, small-scale agricultural production, and a temporary food stand. Property is currently developed within existing single-family residence, three-car garage and an ADU. As for project background, here's a timeline. On October 2nd, uh, last 2023, there was a notice violation. Uh, subsequent March and the spring, the ag permit application was submitted. November of that year, a CPP meeting was held. January of this year, a month or so ago, the ag permit was approved. And, uh, within the last, within 10 days, Gary Phillips, the neighbor, filed an appeal and tonight's hearing. So now I'll go through each of the appeal points and staff's rebuttal to each. First point, appellate position. The appellate states that the citizen participation program meeting notice stated that applicant proposes a community garden, a food stand, book beekeeping, keeping of 100 animals, and special events with at least 30 participants. The appellate further states that these uses are not providing a community need. In summary, and further described in the staff report, staff responded with, "The ag permit is limited as stated to 10-plot community garden, small animal keeping, less than 100 animals, small-scale ag production, and a temporary food stand." The CPP notice was consistent with the ag permit scope. There are no bees on site, and the project is consistent with the urban ag ordinance. Phillips, Gary, Gary Phillips now also states, the appellate states that the project's use of 45 parking spaces anticipates group activity which does not fit with the existing residential neighborhood, which means a traffic increase of 180 cars. Based on the 10 community garden plots and staff's review of the project, the 10 community garden plots would generate 10 parking spaces, which was be, to which the applicant was able to demonstrate on-site. Um, the parking spaces for the home and the ADU would be maintained. This would be estimated to generate 20 daily trips, one in the morning and one in the evening, assuming all 10 cars showed up at the same time. And the temporary food stand would generate eight trips. That was based on a County of San Diego, um, project as noted in the staff report. So 10 plus eight equals 28 daily trips, which means 14 vehicles, and this is a conservative estimate. The trips for the home and the ADU are not counted as those are existing. The appellate states that the existing road is only 18 feet wide, which is short of fire code requirements, and the applicant has encroached on that easement. Akeeta Lane is a private road, which is actually overlained by a 40-foot-wide private road easement and a 52-wide, 52-foot-wide easement. The project includes standard condition fire condition 20, which requires a minimum 24-foot-wide unobstructed width for fire access. Yes, the road is 18-foot paved and not, but not required to be improved because of its an existing condition. The ag permit does not trigger road widening. If there are any encroachments into either easement, those are to be investigated and filed as a part of a code complaint. The appellate states that 100 animals are too many and will increase order. The ag permit allows up to 100 small animals, which requires an ag permit. The municipal code defines small animals, basically, and as described in further detail in the staff report, as small domesticated animals. And the municipal code establishes animal enclosure requirements and the caring of those, and the care of those animal enclosure requirements, which are codified in these conditions of approval. In summary, they shall not exceed a 100 animals. Declininess of the animal enclosures is, is required regarding excrement, odor, and flies. Maneuvers kept in containers and picked up regularly, and animal grounds are to be watered down to minimize dust. The ag permit is inappropriate for the existing residential area. Resource management policy, 11.13 of the general plan encourages agricultural and horticultural practices citywide. Municipal code 30 dot 33, that enables the urban ag ordinance, is also applied citywide, including the Leavenhein in, community. Therefore, the ag permit was issued in compliance with the general plan and the municipal code. And further, general plan land use zoning identifies Leavenhein as rural residential, and the project is consistent with that underlying zoning. The appellate disagrees with the CEQA exemptions, the California Environmental, Environmental Quality Act. Pursuant to CEQA, CEQA is identified as the lead agency and was responsible for making arguments for exemptions for a project that may have indirect or direct consequences to the environment. As a result, the project meets the criteria to be exempt from CEQA pursuant to these, these three sections, 15301, 303, and 304, in regard to the operation of repair of private structures, construction of small structures, and minor private alterations of land. This covers both the ag operation and the existing single-family residence. The appellate states that there was insufficient time to review and respond to the CPP notice, and not all neighboring property owners received notice. The appellate demands a properly noticed hearing. The CPP notice was mailed on Friday, October 25. 27 notices were mailed to a 300-foot radius in accordance to the municipal code. The meeting was held here at the Civic Center on Wednesday, November 6, which allowed for a 12-day notice, which exceeds the city's minimum 10-day notice. There was also a legal notice mailed on Thursday, December 19, um, in, in anticipation of the potential either project approval or denial. Again, the same 27 notices were to the 300-foot radius. Project was approved on Wednesday, January 15, and through the holidays, because the city was closed, which allowed for a longer 27-day notice, therefore far exceeding the city's minimum 10-day notice. The appellate states that despite the ag permit review and code enforcement involvement, applicant continues to operate in violation. The, the ag permit will remedy the code violation issued in October 2023, and conditions of approval ensure compliance, such that the ag permit cannot be intensified beyond that what we've been approved. Future modifications to the permit need to be reviewed by the city, and the ag permit can be revoked or suspended by the city. The appellate states that the grant of the permit will generate litigation and an ongoing nuisance that continues to disrupt the neighborhood. After the city's approval, the issue is a civil matter. Additionally, staff reviewed some of the comments received, and the, the county of San Diego regulates all community gardens and food safety as it relates to the Department of Health and Services. The city's municipal code in chapter 11 points to the county's Department of Health Services. Therefore, because of the animals on-site, the interaction between the animals, the safety of the produce, the cleanliness of the tools, and such, all related to the community garden. And here's some examples of what's found on the web page about food safety and, um, guidelines as such. Staff is recommending the council, um, with the applicant's agreement that we would like to add this condition to the resolution, such that prior to use and reliance of this permit, the ag permit shall demonstrate compliance with the County of San Diego Department of Environmental Health and Quality Regulations for Community Gardens and Food Safety to the satisfaction of the Development Services Department. Therefore, staff's recommendation is to include that new condition and adopt City Council Resolution 202530, denying the appeal and affirming this, the Development Services Director decision to approve the ag permit. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So, does anybody in council have preliminary questions? If not, we can go to the, um, that's where we're going next. Yep. Oh, did I skip it? Oh, yeah, I did. Yeah. Uh, disclosure. We'll go to, we'll do disclosure starting at the far end.
Um, I have visited, uh, the Sugar, Sugar Sweet Farms with my family.
Yeah, I've also visited for a tour to see what the property is all about.
I visited the, um, property, uh, with the owners, um, toured the property and looked at the surrounding areas as well as the, uh, road leading to it.
Okay. I also visited Sugarman Farms. Uh, it's probably a year ago though. It's been quite a while. Um, I also knew the prior owner, uh, the Pam and Steve Fitch that lived there. And, and we held many, uh, he was president of the Leavenhein Town Council, and we held many, uh, uh, board meetings out there on the property. So I'm pretty familiar with it. Uh, I also talked with, uh, before Steve and Pam bought it, they bought it from, if you remember Lauren Nancarroll, uh, Lauren and Suzie. And I just, I corresponded with her because I'm like, wasn't the News8 Farm, as they used to call it out there? And the answer is yes. And in fact, I, I found a, uh, 1993 Earth Times article where it's quote, said quote, "Lauren, with wife Suzie and their two children, Graham and Hannah, live in rural North County on this road, or on this, uh, property, where they raise chickens, ride their horse, and enjoy a variety of household pets." And I confirmed today that it was the same house as I had knew, but I just wanted to confirm from Suzie. And I thought that's important information that could be germane tonight. So that's my disclosure.
Now, questions?
Yeah. Now, preliminary questions? Councilmember O'Hara.
Uh, just a quick question. And I, I've had a very long day, so I apologize. I did not get to pull the page on this. Um, I read somewhere in this report, skipping through it, um, that the farm may be drawing water from a fire hydrant. Did I read that incorrectly? Is that, and can you tell me about that?
Um, yes, staff had to chase that down, try to figure out what's going on. Um, I, from what we understand is that a connection was made back in 2021-ish. So when the photo was given to us, we, we thought it was real time, if you will. Long story short, um, the, when I was notified of that, I let code enforcement, fire department, and OMWD know, since OMWD, that's in their district, they run the fire hydrants. They went out, they investigated, and ultimately they were fined, but then that fine was waived recently, um, since there was, quote, "No malicious intent."
Respectfully, can I show you a picture of it or wait till my official?
Uh, wait, wait until your time.
Yeah.
This, this is a chance for council to ask preliminary questions. We're not deliberating yet. We're asking clarifying questions of the staff report in particular.
So, so going forward, what is the condition around using a fire hydrant?
Um, no private owner should be using a public fire hydrant.
Okay. So I'm going to leave that, if it's okay, for the, uh, the, the applicant to, to address, if you don't mind, please include that in your address, or otherwise we can ask it after you have your time. Thank you for the clarification.
Um, how many, do you know, I'm sorry, uh, do you know how many other ag permits are in the city?
There officially agricultural permit, there are three.
Has there any, any, any others in Leavenhein?
No. The three are, um, this is number three. One is root sellers. Root sellers is, um, they grow and they're just strictly catering. They're off of Sheridan near Lucadia Boulevard. And then the first one is, uh, or I'm sorry, the other, the second one is the, the Cardiff Farmer's Market. Those that qualify as the ag permit.
What about coastal root farms? Are they not an ag permit?
I, that is on.
Leach dag.
Leach dag.
I, do you recall that? Was that before?
I believe that one was before the urban agricultural ordinance was adopted.
So that technically is, uh, non-conforming, um, pre-existing non-conforming?
It could be. We would have to look at the details.
We didn't research that one.
Okay. I believe there were two, that and Coral, Coral Creek.
Coral Tree.
Coral Tree Farms.
Coral Tree was also legal non-conforming from 2014, before the ag permit.
Okay. Any other questions or can we move on? Okay. So we will move on next to, uh, open the public hearing. And the appellate will go first with 10 minutes.
Yeah, sure.
I just have a real quick word together, but one of the things I would like to address is that the Sugarmans posted in the San Diego Union, the ad to come here tonight, and on Instagram. These are the people that don't live on Akeeta Lane. Any, everybody raise your hand that live on Akeeta Lane.
Go ahead and start.
No, you don't. You don't live on Akeeta Lane. There's two people that live on Akeeta Lane.
You've got 10 minutes.
I know. I just want to let you know, this is the amount of traffic that you're bringing as you talk about our peaceful, tranquil paradise.
Thank you. Okay. All right. First of all, thanks to, uh, thanks for your time tonight to the mayor, city council. Um, I've been waiting 18 months, honestly, to get in front of you, uh, to get the facts in front of you. Um, for the record, uh, in spite of what Cindy pointed out, has been the recent barrage of social media, uh, newspaper articles, and now television stations, uh, saying, "I am not trying to shut down Sugar Sweet Farm." That is a false and misleading story. Um, this decision should not be made. I, I compel you that it should be decided not by the court of public opinion, but rather the municipal code set forth by the city of Encinitas. I've heard city codes multiple times during this, and I, I'm respectful of that and hoping that we adhere to that. As you can say, um, as, these stories are like one neighbor. It's not one neighbor. You can see that, uh, this was signed by seven different neighbors that are opposed to it. Now, due to the fact that they couldn't all be here tonight, we were able to resolve actually one of the issues, which there were concerns about the care of the animals. That has been resolved, so I'm very happy that that has been taken care of. But still, that is a huge amount of numbers. Um, and I, again, the basis for my appeal is I honestly just don't understand why the current code violations are not being enforced. The approval of this project will open the door for continued expansion of Sugar Sweet Farm behind the, beyond the designated use as outlined by the city. You can go ahead and cue my PowerPoint now, please. I will establish a pattern of unethical behavior and code violations that have been repeated over and over by the Sugarmans. I was instructed by the city of Encinitas to document those code violations, and they were submitted to the city. We will now go over those right now. Um, so again, we are opposed to the granting of this agricultural permit because the Sugarmans were advised on October 31st to immediately cease all activity associated with the unpermitted business Sugar Sweet Farms, cancel reservations, and remove all advertisements. They'd since resumed to, uh, doing it. Uh, go back to, I want to show the, the, uh, that first slide, not yet. Right there is your farm open. Goat yoga. Goat yoga is permit, is prohibited. And yet there it is, being advertised once again on, on, uh, video. In addition, it's currently on social media. This is dated February 25th. Come on out and enjoy goat yoga. Well, as I understand what the council just said, goat yoga is prohibited according to those rules. So I have extreme cautiousness, go ahead, next slide, to, to have ethics and code. The Sugarmans have been, as you pointed out, illegally tapping into the city of Encinitas Fire Department. All the stuff we've just heard about fire danger, wow, that's great. So we get a fire in our neighborhood and the Sugarmans decide to use it? Not only did they tap into it, when they were confronted on the use of it, they denied it. This type of dishonesty just cannot be tolerated. So we're going to continue to move on. It becomes a matter of trust and integrity. Why would the city of Encinitas grant this very lucrative ag permit? There's only been two. This would be the third. One is the farmer's market. I get it. That's serving 100 different, you know, farmers in the market area, and they can sell their stuff there. Um, so let's get right into the videos, because they say a picture is worth a thousand words. Here, oh, by the way, go back. That, that actually is from the city saying, "Hey, guess what? You've, we've been ordered to cease and desist. Get rid of your goat yoga." All right. Well, you see that they're still advertising it. They're still doing it. Go to the next slide. I heard you, um, honorable mayor, that you'd said that what has been permitted, and this is a little bit of a discrepancy and super important point that I want to bring up, that the land use was going to be approved for, and you mentioned it right there, ag permit, community garden, small animals, up to 100 animals, small-scale agricultural production, temporary food stand. Suddenly, in the report that Jay shared, we've added that, uh, small events are now included. This becomes very important. Please remember that as we move forward. So let's jump into these videos. Again, that is a critical point to remember. All right. Here is a picture of the Sugarmans. That's Sean Sugarman, it's noted right here, with the fire hydrant hooked up, going to their house. You'll hear in a video where Samuel says, "Oh, no, that, that's for kids playing in there." No, it was to fill up their pool. Like, how, irrehensible. Please cue that video, and I hope to God it works. Please turn it up.
Okay.
This is unbelievable use of cars.
Here are all the cars. And we just saw posting for them on goat yoga. And this will be submitted to the city. Hey, Samuel, quick question.
Yes, sir.
Did you ever tap into that fire hydrant and use the city's water?
Uh, no.
Oh, okay, cool. You're sure about that?
Yeah, I don't think we've ever done that.
All right. Sounds good.
I, I got a call that said that you think we have children playing in a fire.
No, children are playing in it. They filled up their.
Hey, you know what? It's okay. Hey, guess what, Samuel? You want to sit, you're sticking with that. All right. Here's more cars, more cars, more cars. Samuel denies ever doing that. And we have photos.
Okay, you can stop that video. Let's hit the next video. Next, next slide. Here is goat yoga happening after it's been told to cease and desist. This is before they put netting up so that you can't see in their yard, so that they hide everything that they're doing. All right. And there they are. The next one's going to even get better. And I want you to key in, go right ahead. Video of goat yoga taking class after cease and desist, video two. I'm sorry, that's a downward dog right there, if I've ever seen one.
Cindy, it doesn't matter. It's with the city. At first I thought you guys just didn't know.
Honestly.
Now you know. We got a letter that said you're not going to do it anymore. It's going to be, it's just going to be, um, youth camps. I mean, that's fine. Like, again.
We do.
Okay, next video, because I know that we're short on time. Please listen to this very closely.
It, Cindy, it doesn't matter. It's with the city.
We can. We can have business. We can have private events.
How many people are at your private event?
Private event.
How many people?
Wearing a goat yoga shirt.
No, how many people are at the private event right now?
That's private being private.
No, just ask, I'm just asking you. There's not supposed to be more than 12 people and they're supposed to be kids.
I mean, I can tell they're staying on a Saturday week.
That is the sound of a goat in the background. That is the sound of a goat in the background.
I honestly do not want to spend my life policing things that are not supposed to be happening, that are very clearly said, "Don't do it." So that is my plea to you. I'm gonna bring up my attorney, who's gonna address some municipal code concerns with you. I think we've covered just about everything. Again, great review on Yelp, it's not happening anymore. But there it is on Yelp from a month ago. It's ridiculous, I'm sorry, it would be really, really disappointing if we end up doing that. So, Mr. Demersian, if you can point towards some of your code questions, we've got roughly two minutes left for you.
Sure. You can have all of them.
Yeah, I've got all my paperwork.
Good evening, esteemed city council members, Honorable Mayor, Madam Mayor, manager, council, staff. Everybody expects, as an attorney, in the next minute and a half, for me to bring you to tears and have somebody stand up in the back of the room and scream that I did it, and have it be a wonderful thing. The message that we've created, staff has obviously drawn the conclusion that the full scope of an agricultural permit is not to be granted. For example, beehives, beehives are permitted under an agricultural permit. Groups up to 30 people are permitted under an agricultural permit. So staff has obviously decided to limit the scope of this agricultural permit. And the question you have to ask yourself is, will applicants abide by the limit? Now, the answer is, every time there's a problem, we call code enforcement, and code enforcement come out, and so forth and so on. In fact, Ms. Sugarman says, matter of fact, to the Union Tribune today, "The agricultural permit will allow the Sugarman family to quote, 'legally continue with existing farming activities,' as well as hosting in the community garden area." So they've been, they admit that they've been operating illegally. And the answer to operating illegally is to change the rules. I've heard talk today about speeding here in Encinitas. Was the answer to raise the speed limit so people aren't speeding anymore? No, the answer is to enforce the limit. The answer is to enforce the code, and the way you do that is you don't give in...
To that permit.
To the permit.
The only thing, again, I want to bring up...
Okay, thank you. You'll have five, you'll have five more minutes.
Oh, I get five more.
You get five more minutes during the rebuttal phase.
All right, thank you.
After public speaker. So now we'll hear from the applicant.
Thank you, Congressman.
In same 10 minutes.
I'm honored to be here tonight before you. I'm Elizabeth Sugarman, and our family owns Sugar Sweet Farm. And we wanted to talk about, I'll just address the fire hose situation. My son Bubba, when he was in college, was a volunteer fireman. And we did hook up to the fire hydrant to do an emergency preparedness drill. We have racked our brains to remember when it was, because Mr. De Joso told us that the Phillips had called him and said they had a picture of us hooking up, and they were saying that we were letting the children play in the fire hydrant like it was Hell's Kitchen. And we were like, when did we ever hook up to the fire hydrant? We couldn't even remember doing it. I clarified with Mr. De Joso, it was February 7th that he heard from Ms. Phillips, and she said, "I have a photo, they've hooked up to the fire hydrant today, February 7th." So when Bubba and I talked about it, we were like, when did we hook up to the fire hydrant and do an emergency preparedness drill? And he goes, "Well, I came up from college, I was all excited about being a volunteer fireman. I had consulted with the fire chief at college, and then we, another retired fireman here locally, and he purchased all used fire hoses, he was like, we need to make our farm fire-ready. You know, we're in a really high-risk area, all of us who live out there have had our insurance dropped recently, and we just had the Ember Pro guys here as well, reminding us of that." So he bought used fire hoses with the help of this retired fireman, also firefighting equipment. And then that same advisor that he was consulting with said, "Be sure you have all the right couplings and the right nozzle so you can hook up to the fire hydrant, which is at Neighbor Green's property across Akita Lane from our property." So we conducted an emergency preparedness drill, we wanted to see if the hoses would connect and how far we could defend from the fire hydrant in the event that there was a fire, and we needed to defend all the properties that we could reach. So we did that on a Saturday. Bubba was still in college, he graduated in 2021, so we don't know what day that was, we can't remember. But it was before May of 2021 when he graduated, because he was still in school. Bubba did consult with the local fire department, and they said they didn't care if we hooked up, and that we could check it all out. So we did that, we thought we had followed the rules. So I received in the mail a letter, which was from Brian Sodeman, who's in, from the Leavenheim Municipal Water District. He's the, and he said there was a, that we were guilty, we had been accused of water theft, and that there was a $1,000 fine that would appear on my water bill, which it did. And it was a guilty till proven innocent kind of situation. We met, sorry, I'm getting this speed-up message, we met with Mr. Sodeman. He immediately saw this was part of a campaign, a larger campaign of harassment, when we, when he was able to look at the public records and see that there were over 500 pages of complaints in our file from the Phillips against us at City Hall in our code enforcement file. He didn't want the OMWD to be a part of that, and so he immediately waived the fee and said, "Don't do that again, slow down now." So I think the video that we've prepared for you tonight addresses really everything else that the appellant has brought up, and so let's cue that now. Thank you, Jay.
Sugar Sweet Farm is a family-run, organic hobby farm, and has been a cornerstone of Leavenheim for over 20 years. It's our home, our passion, and our life.
Each year, our farm benefits the lives of our community through educational programs, farm activities, and community events.
Tonight, we're here to address the appeal and finalize an important step, securing an agricultural permit with the support of our local government, so we can continue offering these experiences to our beloved community.
First, the claim that our farm causes traffic and congestion is factually incorrect. We hired a professional traffic engineering firm, Chin Ryan Associates, which conducted a review and concluded that our activities create no significant impact. We operate by appointment only and greet our guests as they arrive to ensure they park on-site in our driveway.
The appeal also alleges that we keep bees on the property, creating a nuisance. While beekeeping is permitted in our zone, we haven't had hives here for over seven years. We moved our beehives to a neighbor's property long ago.
The most hurtful claim is that we neglect our animals. This couldn't be further from the truth. Our animals are our family. We maintain a clean and healthy environment with twice-daily cleanings, high-quality nutrition, and ample space for them to roam.
Much of this conflict stems from a misunderstanding regarding Akita Lane, an easement providing access to a neighboring property. The neighbors mistakenly believe they own the road, but in fact, they have an easement across our property for ingress and egress. We invested in a survey and obtained legal counsel to clarify these rights. In an effort to save our family farm, we engaged with the city in good faith and applied for the necessary permit so we could continue sharing our farm with our community, with the city's blessing. The city determined we needed an agricultural permit, making us only the third applicant in Encinitas history. Since this is an uncommon permit, the process was unclear. But we believe, and the city agrees, that we have the right to continue to share our property with the community without harassment.
To understand Sugar Sweet Farm and its importance to Encinitas, you must understand its history. This land, located on Encinitas' far eastern border, has deep agricultural roots. The farm was homesteaded by the Boomin family in the 1880s.
My grandfather came to this area as a colonist, as a part of what they call Colony of Leavenheim. And he left the colony after two years and then homesteaded, which this, this is part of. I remember this land well, it was, it was part of the ranch. Leavenheim started out as, as very agricultural. Even the whole time I was growing up, almost every family that lived there was either a farmer or a rancher, all ranched and, and farmed in Leavenheim, as it had its birth as an agricultural area.
Later, the Nancaro family transformed it into a working ranch. Lauren Nancaro, a beloved San Diego News personality, would often broadcast from his citrus orchard here.
My husband, Lauren, and I owned the property before Sugar Sweet. And we raised our own meat, and we raised our own produce, and we raised our own vegetables, and... Elizabeth continued the garden and the beautiful farm animals that are there. And what a gift to this community and to our kids who need, desperately need dirt. So I hope that you will honor or allow Sugar Sweet to continue for the benefit of our, of our community.
When we moved to Southern California in 2004, we wanted our children to grow up working with their hands, caring for animals, and connecting with the land. When we found the perfect farm in Leavenheim, we were beyond thrilled. When a local Waldorf school needed a space for a first-grade class, including our son, we decided to welcome them to our farm and discovered how much the community craved a deeper connection to nature.
As my sister and I grew older, we joined the Leavenheim Valley 4-H Club. More kids came to the farm for hands-on learning. Through this experience, we noticed a growing need for our peers to unplug and connect with the world around them. So we started welcoming school groups and scout troops, providing them a place to learn and grow.
We observed families enjoying these experiences and wanting more. So we created a summer camp where kids could milk goats, harvest vegetables, and press fresh juice. Parents longed for that same connection, which is why we introduced goat yoga, an easy, joyful way for adults to engage with nature.
As we continued to grow, we recognized that our seniors in our community were underserved. Since many of them are less mobile, we decided to take our animals to them. We created programs with llamas, miniature donkeys, and they provided animal-assisted therapy to retirement homes and facilities for disabled adults, sharing comfort and joy with those who need it most. What began as a simple family farm has organically developed into something much greater, a conduit for connection, learning, and joy for the entire community.
Despite the challenges and misrepresentations, our commitment to our incredible community remains unwavering. As we near the completion of this permit process, we are hopeful for a resolution that will allow us all to live peacefully together. We are grateful for the support of the City of Encinitas. And with their protection, we're excited to continue sharing the farm with all of you. Thank you.
Just have a little bit of time, so I just wanted to also say, yes, we have still done goat yoga since we were closed in October of 2023. Our instruction from the cities was we can't do goat yoga as a business. And so we have not done that, but we have opened our farm up and taken this opportunity while we've had to be quiet and not have a business, and try to survive, to do charity work. So we have had Girl Scout troops, we have had ex-convicts from UCSD, we have had church groups to our property to do goat yoga.
Thank you. How many public speakers do we have? 35, oh my goodness. So I think we will take a 10-minute break. I'm gonna limit it to two minutes, that's almost an hour of public hearing. So like I say, if, if you can shorten it below two minutes, it'd be appreciated, and try not to be too repetitive. We're gonna be here a while for this, so, but let's be back at 24 till. If we can come back to order here. Don't, don't want to take too long. Needed a very important break there. So we're going to do two minutes, public speakers, 32. If, if you're queued up by the clerk, if you could come up to these first three seats, so you're right there and we don't have to wait for you to walk from the back, back of the room or anything, it'll, it'll speed this up. And with that, first three speakers.
First three speakers, Corey Blau with the time donation from Andy Blau. Andy, are you still here? Yep. Followed by Kristin Gaspar and then Elizabeth Baker.
Am I able to see the, oh, yes, thank you. Hi, my name is Corey Blau. I've lived a block away from Sugar Sweet Farms for nine years now, and I'm off that, the access road. I'm an attorney professionally, but I dedicated my life to rescuing goats, and I follow animal sanctuary standards for caring for animals, and I have a vast network of sanctuaries and vets that I work with. My concerns here are solely for the welfare of the animals, and I just want to offer a different perspective. So, so you guys saw my, my name is on the petition, but I don't have those same grievances. It's just with respect to the welfare of the animals. Providing proper shelter for farm animals is not only the right thing to do, it is the law. California Penal Code 597 prohibits actions such as physically harming animals, but it also prohibits neglect, and neglect includes lack of shelter. The current conditions at Sugar Sweet Farms where goats and other animals lack proper shelter and are exposed to difficult weather and predators violate these legal standards because there's no real shelter. Shelter is defined as something that has at least three walls and a roof. Goats are not naturally adapted to extreme weather conditions and can suffer from heat stroke, hypothermia, inflammatory diseases, and respiratory problems if exposed to prolonged cold, wet, or weather, or heat. Proper shelter ensures that animals are dry and free from standing in mud or water, which is essential for their health. I've watched these animals through the winters and summers, and it's not easy at night or during the heat of the summer. I've adopted some of these goats that will come to me with health problems, including inflammatory conditions, arthritis, and respiratory issues that my vets have indicated are a result of these inadequate living conditions. Some have died. I recognize that Sugar Sweet Farms has a network of supporters in the community, people who have enjoyed Goat Yoga or farm camps for years, and I think this is great. I think being around animals is healing, and these animals enjoy engaging in social activities. But most people are ignorant to the true need for shelter. Thankfully, ignorance can be overcome. The love that exists must extend to providing adequate shelter, and you all must consider when it rains for days and days, they sleep in the cold mud, and when it's extremely hot or extremely cold, when it is the darkened night and predators are passing by. Would you do this to your dog? I hope not. Then don't do it to prey animals. And if you've listened to me, you are no longer ignorant to these needs. And if you don't believe me, ask AI, ask, ask a Google search. Just say, do goats need shelter? So, subject to building better shelter and space for these animals, I'm incredibly supportive of this permit for Goat Yoga, the kids' camps, the farm stand, all of it. I've not been overly bothered by cars. And in the spirit of collaboration, on the morning of March 25th, 2025, I sat down with Elizabeth and her son, Bubba. They have committed to build shelter, provide better space, and create berms to help with the runoff that occurs on our, on our road. We shook hands in good faith that collectively we would work to make this happen so that rather than continue the welfare concerns that the neighbor, that the neighbors have, we can find common ground and collaborate to improve the welfare of the animals, and then together continue to enrich the community of Encinitas. So I'm grateful for our chance to come together, and I look forward to working with them. And I'm, I'm grateful for this time in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristin next. Kristin, Kristin, you're up, aren't you, second?
Next speaker, Kristin Gaspar.
Yeah. Boy, you would think you'd know how this works, of all the people. Former mayor, former supervisor, former council member. You forget, how quickly we forget.
Well, good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is indeed Kristin Gaspar, proud former mayor of the City of Encinitas. And I wanted to start out with a quick story about my daughter, Addie. When she was about eight years old, she developed an intense love for pigs, so much so that to this day, no one in our family feels entirely comfortable even eating bacon around her. But she does have this unshakable respect for animals, and it was that passion that first led us to Sugar Sweet Farm. And I remember reaching out to Elizabeth to see if we could host Addie's birthday party there, and what resulted was not just a celebration, but a profound connection with nature, animals, and community. Fast forward seven years, we still have Sugar Sweet memories of that day. Now, in my role at Palomar Health, I witness the crisis of youth mental health nearly every day. Our children are struggling, they're stressed, they're disconnected, and they're facing pressures we never could have imagined at their age. There is overwhelming evidence that time spent in nature, interacting with animals, and engaging in hands-on experiences is incredibly therapeutic. Sugar Sweet Farm provides that opportunity right here in our own backyard. It's not just a place with goats and gardens, but it's a sanctuary where children and families can find peace, connection, and healing. Tonight, I urge you to do everything in your power to protect Sugar Sweet Farm. We cannot allow another vital piece in our town's identity to slip away. Let's recognize the importance of this space and ensure that future generations of children, just like my Addie, that all those years ago, have a place to learn, grow, and connect with something greater than themselves. Thank you.
And who's up after that, just so they can queue up?
Following Elizabeth Baker is Elizabeth Griswold, Quincy Stokes, and John Stokes.
I am honestly surprised that you called my name. I was with my kids. We were going to go, and then I came in, and here I am. So may not be as eloquent, but, sorry, a little emotional. I have a nine-year-old, a seven-year-old, and a five-year-old, and they have just been incredibly impacted by Sugar Sweet Farms. What I can say about the Sugarman family is that they have hearts of gold. When you go to that farm, every inch of it is imbued with kindness and love and beauty. And I do believe that we should fight to, to keep that space here for our kids. Thank you for everything you have done for our family and the community. That's it.
Quincy Stokes, followed by John Stokes.
Are they in the other room, perhaps? Oh, okay.
Next three speakers, Tasha Bach, Amanda Rogers, and Charlie Clark.
So Amanda.
Hi. You're Amanda?
Amanda Rogers.
I am Amanda Rogers, too.
No way. And I, I've been doing this 25 years, never had this happen. Never.
Like, wait. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Amanda Rogers. I am manager of Carter's Heng Green here in Olivenhain, and I've worked there for almost 20 years. I find it a great honor to work here in this community. It's a privilege to know so many of my customers who are here tonight, so many of them, and it's a privilege and honor to know the Sugarman family. I have personally known the Sugarman family for several years. They have been weekly, very loyal customers of ours. Elizabeth is not only loyal because she believes we're the best feed store. We're not. We've messed up quite a few times. She is loyal because she believes in this community, and she believes in family. Like I said, we're a family-run business. Sorry, I lost my voice. Three weeks ago, it's still not back. It is apparent by their actions how much the Sugarman family gives to this community. You can see how important it is to them to educate and show children and anybody who is willing to learn about animals and the vast importance of agriculture. They have donated thousands and thousands of hours to so many people in our community so they can experience the love of animals and nature that it gives to your soul. The amount of children their farm has touched is pure magic. Sugar Sweet Farm is committed to changing and impacting people's lives. The first time I stepped foot on their farm, I actually cried. I felt loved, I felt nurtured, and I felt safe. They have curated a beautiful space for people to come and grow and feel loved. Their animals are beyond loved, and they are cared for better than most animals you've ever seen. Sugar Sweet Farm is a slice of heaven. I am here to support the Sugarman family and their beautiful farm. I believe in their cause, and I believe that this community believes in them. I pray that you can feel what a disservice it would be for our community if Sugar Sweet Farm did not exist. I pray that this council can make the correct decision, and you can all feel the magic of the farm.
Next speaker is Charlie Clark, followed by John Griswold and Heidi Griswold.
Hi, my name is Charlie, and I'm 14 years old. I've spent five summers going to Sugar Sweet Farms camp, and it has had a huge impact on who I am today. I now ride horses competitively, and before going to Sugar Sweet Farms, I would never would have imagined enjoying spending time around horses the way I do today. The farm introduced me to the joy of working with animals and gave me a sense of belonging in a caring, supportive community. I learned how to be responsible, work with others, and show kindness to both animals and people. I still remember how kind Elizabeth and the counselors were. They had a way of making every kid feel welcomed and valued, creating a space where everyone felt like they belonged. Sugar Sweet Farms wasn't just a place to spend time when my parents were at work. It was a place where I built lasting memories and learned important life lessons. I want other kids to have the same chance to experience the magic of this farm. It breaks my heart to think that such a special place could disappear. Sugar Sweet Farms means so much to me and so many others, and I hope it continues to inspire kids and instill in them the same love and love for animals, teamwork, and kindness that it gave me.
I know we got a lot of people to get through. John Griswold, I live in Village Park, and we're going to share our time so that we're faster. So we're going to do two minutes instead of four. So I've known the Sugarmans a long time. They have really benefited my family, you know, growing up in, in, in Solana Beach and then moving to Encinitas, being able to get out into nature. I grew up in the Boy Scouts. I did a lot of outdoor stuff and really exposed my kids to, to ag is something that I didn't quite get as a kid. I was sort of jealous of some of my friends who were in, in Poway that has a rich agricultural history, and this is important for Encinitas. To what was already announced today, if we, if, if this changes, we're going to lose, what, 30% of our existing ag from two, from three to two, right? So along those same lines, it also seems that this started as an argument over an easement. And when they didn't get their way, it expanded and expanded, and I would guess is going to continue to expand. But the germ of this was not complaint over the farm, it was a complaint over an easement. Anything to add?
You can pull the mic down.
Oh, yeah. What I love about Sugar Sweet Farm is that you can just... What I love about Sugar Sweet Farm is that you can just be with the animals and interact with them and just have so much fun doing it.
My youngest is five and a half. You have to be six to start, and she told me this morning that she's been waiting her entire life for this moment and can't wait to have her first Sugar Sweet Farm experience.
Next three speakers, David Anderson, Dave Berman, followed by Jody Burke.
Good evening, everyone. My name is David Anderson, and I've known the Sugarmans for, I don't know, a decade or more. Great people, great family. I wanted to give a different perspective. My wife and I just got back from Lakewood Ranch, which is near Sarasota, Florida. For those of you that don't know, Lakewood Ranch is rated the number-one development in the United States right now. And the reason, when they did the polling, the primary reason, or one of the primary reasons, is they kept their community from way back then. And I believe that gentleman here tonight spoke about his family and way back then, they connected it. And so you go down the road, the main road of the development, and on the left, you've got these beautiful homes, you've got lakes, ponds, alligators. And then on the right, you've got farmland, you've got cattle. Go down the road a little more, another development. Beautiful landscape, ponds, lakes, houses. A little bit further down, horses. Same thing. So what they've got is they've got a development that incorporates not just the newness, but it keeps the old. And this is one of the things that we're trying to save here, is the beauty of the old. And Mayor, I think you said it tonight, there's so much connectivity to this family, this property. It's very important. You guys have a lot of power. I hope you guys please dig deep and say, hey, we gotta keep this community and connect to the past. It's very, very important. And we all appreciate the opportunity to come up here and speak, and we appreciate your guys' vote for the Sugarmans tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave Berman, are you here?
Well, let's move on. If Dave comes, we'll...
Jody Burke, followed by Jeanette Hoyman.
Hello. I just, I'm gonna probably repeat what everybody else has been saying. My great-grandkids came in from Missouri. We made an appointment. Elizabeth and her counselors took care of them and showed them how the animals interact, and they had such a great time. And I just hope this stays in our community. I live in Encinitas, by the way. All right, thank you.
Jeanette?
Jeanette, thanks. Hi, I'm a neighbor, and I've known the Sugarmans for over 20 years. And I just want to say that we're in a time in our lives where we need healing, we need love, and we need peace. And that's what I wish for both neighbors. First and foremost, and above all, I want to thank all of you for taking your oath to protect the rights of the people. I think the record shows years-long of reviews and praise and just videos of what happens at Sugar Sweet Farms. I've been a beneficiary many times, going and attending goat yoga and private events for camp promotions and things like that. They've all been small. All the cars are orderly in the driveway. They're parked very carefully. They've been so considerate of everyone in the community and the neighborhood. They put out messages in advance, during, after, and it's very, there's caretaking there. But the one thing that I really want to point out that people may not know about, if you really want to experience the beauty and the wonder and the healing of Sugar Sweet Farm, go there with an autistic child, especially a non-verbal, and you will be blown away at the effect. And I hope and pray that they are allowed to continue. And again, thank you for due process of law and defending that. And thanks for everyone here tonight. Thanks.
Next three speakers, Ari Spangler, followed by Jennifer Harris, and then Avery Correa. Jennifer Harris. Avery Correa. She'll be followed by Cadence Banks and Jody Fisher.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Avery Correa. I have been a part of the Sugar Sweet Farm community for almost four years now, and I just am a big testimony as to the healing and the love that is present there. I have struggled with my mental health since I was 13 years old. That is middle school. I did not start becoming a part of this community until I was 16. So it has really, truly proven that animals and nature and healing are so important. I have struggled with anxiety, with depression. I still do, because it's something that never leaves. But every single time I'm at the farm, it is something that is a beautiful world that you can witness. The animals are, they understand you more than people, and being able to connect with them truly shows just how important these connections are, these animals are. The Sugarmans have become like my second family. Elizabeth's like my second mom. I talk to them, and it's just an amazing community that we have at the farm. And to be able to, I've worked as a, or served as a camp counselor at the summer camps, and to be able to share that healing with the children and to see some of them are really anxious about coming to camp for the first time, or some of them are a little sad to leave their parents. But to show them that animals are so healing in every single way, it is amazing. And it hurts me and it hurts my heart to see some of the things that I've witnessed with all of this happening. It's just not fair to anyone because the farm, it means more to me than I can ever explain to you or ever can show you because it truly saved my life. It is just the most incredible thing, so thank you.
Hi, I'm Cadence. I am 16 years old, and I am an Encinitas resident. I go to high school at La Causa Cana High School. I've been a volunteer for four years, almost four years, at Sugar Sweet Farm, and I've been part of the community since my 11th birthday. It is such a big part of my life. I've got to explore my passions at the farm with the animals. My favorite part about volunteering on the farm is sharing my passion of animals with members of the community, whether kids or adults that don't get to see animals like we have at Sugar Sweet Farm. It's really important to me to continue to value animals and agriculture in our society that is so quickly developing. It's so healing to see the farm and the animals bring joy to children at summer camp, how many smiling faces we have every day. Everybody can find something they love at the farm, whether it's crafts, or the garden, or animals. It's just so healing. I think it's so important for our youth to experience nature and animals and to continue this legacy of agriculture in Encinitas because it is such a core part of our community. I use the farm as an outlet for so many things in my life, facing negativity in school, and the farm is such a healing place for me. It is hard when we have neighbors that don't agree with our values and don't appreciate what we do for the community. I'm 16 years old, and I'm in a lot of videos that were given to you guys as evidence. After repeatedly telling the Phillips to not include me in videos, that is scary for me as a minor and kind of hurt my heart because I love the animal and the farm and our community so much. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jody Fisher. I live in Carlsbad, but I've attended many events at the Sugar Sweet Farms, private events. Thank you for this opportunity. Everything this family farm business does and this property is involved in is motivated by giving something good and productive to the community. Children learn about animals and farming. It's a place for the community to come together to learn. Their work is all done with kindness and sensitivity, and it's a place of joy and a place of healing. It's an asset that should be supported and encouraged in a community and in a state where there is less and less knowledge and familiarity with animals and farming. Thank you for your consideration. I'm a former president of California Women for Agriculture in the Imperial Valley chapter.
Next three speakers, Grace Caponetto, followed by Kathy Burns, and then Daniel Powell with multiple-time donations, but we'll only give you two.
Hello, my name's Grace Caponetto. I am 24 years old, and I have been a volunteer at Sugar Sweet Farm for about eight and a half years now. I've known the Sugarmans since I was very young and participating in 4-H. There is, I think, a photo of me on your farm when I was 10. So I've known the family for a long time. And because of my extremely long involvement, I can speak to quite a variety of the topics that have been brought up today. The first that I'd like to mention, which I would like to spend the majority of my time on but can't, is just the magic of the farm. I think so many people have covered this topic already. I'd like to reiterate it. It's truly a special place and has had such a huge impact on my life. I've been volunteering since I was 16, and now I'm in law school, so it's been just spanning my entire life that I've been there. Unfortunately, I was the subject of multiple videos that were on the screen today, presented to you by the Phillips family. I did not consent to these videos being filmed of me. The videos were filmed during a yoga class where it was majority women and children in very compromising, uncomfortable positions to be videoed. The Phillips had come onto our property to video us without our consent. It's extremely troubling and alarming as a young woman to be videoed without your consent. And it is a continuous issue on the property as someone that's there quite regularly. Unfortunately, it's something that we've experienced quite often. I'd also like to quickly speak to the parking situation. As one of the older volunteers, I contribute to the parking situation on Sugar Sweet Farms' property. Everything is done responsibly and according to a very specific order. There are multiple staff members in the driveway at all times guiding the parking situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, or good evening. I'm Kathy Burns, and I've been invited to read a letter written by Susie Nancaro on behalf of the Nancaro family. Dear Encinitas Council, we are in strong support of retaining this community farm, Sugar Sweet Farm. My family lived next door to a Holiday Tree Farm for years, located on Fortuna Ranch Road, now called Sugar Sweet. The neighbor, Gary Phillips, bought the lot and used the easement in front of our house to access the slot versus what we understood. His actual ingress and egress was east, not west, of these properties. We worked with him. When we were moving in Escrow, part of our giving to the next buyer, we trimmed the trees. We were not home at the time, and the tree trimmer inadvertently cut a tree on the property line. There was no clear cut line, and we were trying to make the property both sides look better. The Phillips sued us, delayed our closing for an exorbitant amount of money. So much so that we had to file an insurance claim as we couldn't afford to pay it. Our insurance company paid them. During this time investigation, we learned other situations regarding them, which I will not go into. I find this extreme behavior atrocious, considering they've been graced over the years and continue to harass and bully. We also had field trips with schools and various organizations. We even called our farm the 10 News Ranch, which Mr. Ellers talked about, and the News 8 Ranch, where my late husband, Lauren Nancaro, would broadcast and film growing food techniques, animal husbandry, et cetera. This email isn't one I take lightly, nor without a piece of my heart following Sugar Sweet's journey. Their contribution to humanity, I'm gonna cry, is one our world needs. Be less like the neighbor and follow the good, the just, the kind, the service to others.
Thank you.
My name is Daniel Powell, and I promise I will not repeat what others have said. I will say what others have said to the council, to the staff, the mayor, the council. Thank you for serving. I know it's a very low-paid job, so it's basically a volunteer, so thank you for volunteering to our community. I appreciate it. I've known the Sugarmans for 20 years, and I have a special relationship with them. Before I start with that, I want to let you know that I sold the land to Lux Art Institute, which is now ICA, off of El Camino Real, just north of Manchester. And I came to this city council, it was a previous city council, obviously, it was 25 years ago. And they were wondering, ah, Art Institute, I don't know, I don't know. But fortunately, the wisdom prevailed, and they adopted, and now we have Institute of Contemporary Art in Encinitas, which is a treasure. It's one of only two museums in north coastal San Diego, the other one being Oceanside Museum of Art. And I was just in Mexico City at an art show, and people know Encinitas because of the Institute of Contemporary Art. That's number one. Number two, I want to talk about this exorbitant fee. It was $50,000 25 years ago. That works out, if you're a student of math or a student of inflation, that's $200,000 for one tree. That should tell you what this neighbor's about, harassment and trying to undermine the goodness. Number three, I took a survey of junior high school students, and I asked them, where does your food come from? The number-one answer, seaside market. Number-two answer, lazy acres. Food comes from farms and ranches. This farm and ranch has been since the 1800s. 140 years it's been a ranch and a farm. It should continue to be a ranch and a farm. The fact that you actually have to get an ag permit for something that's been going on for 140 years is kind of strange. Now I'm gonna get real personal. I was given the opportunity to be Bubba Sugarman's mentor while he was in high school for four years. In those four years, he learned to fly a helicopter and got his helicopter pilot's license, fixed-wing helicopter. He DJed a party for 250 people in Colorado. He played the cello for an orchestra. He built his own surfboard and surf right here in Encinitas, and I watched that happen. He built furniture, custom-made furniture. He is a sculptor, and there is a sculpture of his in a major American university right now. He is a Renaissance man. He is kind, he is a scholar, and every person would love to have him as a son. After he graduated from college, and by the way, he was the highest honor awarded by the Congress of the United States, is the Gold Award. He's very humble, and this is the Gold Award that he won by his community service and his leadership. I learned something very important. The most important way to be a good mentor is have a good mentee select you. And he is a great mentee. And what's great about it is he could have, after he graduated from college, he got offers from Wall Street, he got offers from Washington, D.C., and he chose to return to his family farm and support his family farm. Lastly, and I'm gonna get deadly serious, I do a lot of work with veterans that are at risk of suicide. Since this meeting started, three or more veterans have committed suicide every hour of every day. A veteran called me, and I could tell that he was considering taking his life. I called Elizabeth and said, I think we need to do a little bit of therapy with animals. We arranged that. That veteran is alive today. Sugar Sweet Farm doesn't exist for veterans to live. Veterans live because Sugar Sweet Farm exists. I'm gonna repeat that. Sugar Sweet Farm doesn't exist for fetuses. Sugar Sweet Farm doesn't exist for veterans to live. Veterans live because Sugar Sweet Farm exists.
Next three speakers, Matt Adams, followed by Bob Prendergast, and then Ian Allman.
Hi there, and thank you for some time tonight. I'm Matt Adams. I've lived in Olivenhein for 23 years at the end of Dove Hollow, which is about 200 yards from the farm. We can see it from our home, walk past it all the time, and I describe it as nothing but amazing. It is truly a community asset, and we have enjoyed being partners with them on a number of different activities and always share a smile whenever we interact or go by. So I really feel blessed that they're part of our community and part of our lives. The next thing I want to share is that every interaction I've had with their programs, their staff, the owners, has been nothing but positive. They're all terrific people. They're caring, loving, and make every experience fantastic. And then lastly, I wanted to echo a little bit what the former mayor said. We're living with an epidemic of loneliness and isolation. And what the farm can do is to provide community, and it can provide learning, experiential learning. It can bring people together. It can introduce people. It can get people out of offices and homes and into orchards and get a little dirt on their shoes. And it goes a long, long way, as we've heard from a number of people, towards battling the epidemic of loneliness and isolation. So I think that shouldn't be lost in this equation. And again, I appreciate all they do very much, and they're a terrific neighbor, and I'm in total support of them. Thank you.
Well said. Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Bob Prendergast. I'm currently a planning commissioner representing District 4. But I'm here tonight as a private citizen, neighbor, and supporter of Eliza Sugarman and Sugar Sweet Farm's application for a permit to operate a community garden, small-scale agricultural production, temporary food stand, and farm to accommodate 25 to 100 animals. My wife and I submitted a letter to you in your package, so I will not subject you to making you read that again. I've read through the documents and agree with staff that you should deny the appeal and affirm the Development Services Department Director's decision approving the agricultural permit. Sally and I moved into our house in 2007 and met Elizabeth and her family right away. She and her family have been wonderful neighbors. They've been kind and generous with their knowledge of animals and helping us and others in the neighborhood when we needed support. The appellant mentions the community garden and beekeeping will not benefit the community. We recently lost my next-door neighbor, James McDonald. He was my neighbor and friend. He was a friend to Encinitas also. He kept bees on his property and sold honey on his front door. He sorely missed and was an asset to the broader community. The appellant is concerned about traffic. Traffic increased significantly on Fortuna Ranch Road when Canyon de Oro was paved connecting Elephant Forest Road to Fortuna Ranch Road. The city has installed three sets of speed bumps that address the traffic flow. I don't think that Sugar Sweet Farms will seriously impact the traffic count at all. Sugar Sweet Farms maintains their animal enclosure as to impeccable standards. We have never been inconvenienced by any odors. My neighbors have horses, and no one in the immediate area has ever complained about the odors. Lastly, there is some concern about a business enterprise in the community. It's important to note that in the Community Rose area, just west of us, as you come up Fortuna Ranch Road, there are four commercial rehabilitation facilities who receive commercial deliveries of food via box trucks almost daily. And they seem to operate in the community without any major disturbance. Oops. Please approve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Ian Allman. Ian, are you here? Following Ian is Amy Rappaport, Brian Allman, and Maria Gabi.
Good evening, Mayor and council members and staff. My name is Maria Gabi. I come from the neighboring community of Rancho Bernardo, and I'm here to share that Sugar Sweet Farm has been, it is a testament of love, compassion, and commitment to humanity, not only to this community but for the whole county of San Diego. I'm a preschool teacher. I am also a health enthusiast, and I have referred many of my clients and all my families, preschool families, to your farm. And I have heard no less than praise and beautiful testament of their experiences and their healing experiences for the adults and for the kids. So I really am so proud to come to this podium to express my support for this business. And I really encourage all of you to touch, go within in your heart and really feel the community call for conserving and empowering this beautiful city of Encinitas to bring the name of Encinitas through their business through the whole county. Thank you.
Next three speakers, Rebecca Wyatt and Alexa Wood, followed by Cara Chine, and then Amanda Rogers II.
Hello, Mayor, council members and staff. Thanks for having us. I wanted to give my children an opportunity to share their experience with Sugar Sweet Farm. I have my own. I'll just do a brief little intro. They kind of chose some photos of their experiences at Sugar Sweet Farm over the years. My son Wyatt is 10 going on 11. He started when he was six years old. And I'll let them share a little bit more about that. But we have gone to goat yoga together and shared the farm with countless friends and family over the years that have continued to go back as well. Wyatt, do you want to start? Share yours?
I've gone to Sugar Sweet Farm since I was six years old. It's my favorite camp. I look forward to it every year and always want to go back again.
The first time my brother went, I wasn't old enough to go, so in the car, I cried for like half an hour. Sugar Sweet Farm is like a really great experience for kids, and my brother and I look forward to it every year. And like, it's really fun.
Anything else? Good? Thank you.
Thank you.
Cara Chine, followed by aforementioned Amanda Rogers. And final speaker is Bill Ziegler.
Hi, I'm Cara Chine. I'm not gonna repeat all the same things because you get the picture, and you've visited the farm. You know the vibe. You know the love and the beauty and all of the things that go on there. But I did want to also just reiterate, you've heard from some young people that have worked the farm or volunteered on the farm. So another service that the farm provides is my daughter worked with Elizabeth at the farm and learning how to take care of these animals. And she was there for the birth of a goat. I mean, who gets that experience in San Diego? So these experiences are monumental for the people that visit the farm, but also for the community of employees or volunteers that work on the farm as well, these young people that have gained so much from that. And the other thing I just wanted to say before lending, yielding the floor to Amanda Rogers II, is I love this farm because it's one of the reasons, if I could nutshell it, into why I wanted to live in Encinitas so bad for so many years. I came from a gated community in Rancho Santa Fe, and I needed a community with a soul and with character. And this farm is one of the quintessential things of what you would think of when you think of Encinitas, along with the turkey trot with the people with the butter balls on their head running. It's got character. We've got character as a community, and we should make sure we preserve that character. Thank you.
I'm back.
So your name is officially, what, Amanda Two now, right?
My name is officially Amanda Two. I think I'm gonna have to take senior because I'm clearly older. So I'm not deeply connected with Sugar Sweet Farm. I live on the corner of Lone Jack, where you go around the sharp curve. And I would say, as a person who hears everything that goes around that corner, if there was an increase in traffic, I would know. I would also probably get in my car and follow them because I would like to go to goat yoga, but I haven't gone yet. I have taken my children to Sugar Sweet Farm a number of times, and my son is autistic. He does not respond well to a lot of situations, and he responds really beautifully to Sugar Sweet Farm. He's very sensitive to smells. And listening to some of the complaints, I thought it was worthwhile to mention that if it smelled bad, I would know because Michael would lose it. And being able to have access to something that's quirky and fun and interesting. There are so many places you can live in San Diego. You can live in Santa Luis. You can live in a gated community. You can live in a place that's very tidy and has an HOA. But if you choose to live in Olivenhein, you have access to these quirky, wonderful places like Sugar Sweet Farm. And so I think that it's, there's a lot of places to be in this world. And if you don't like being close to that, like, maybe find a different place. Anyway, I think you should approve it because clearly, we all do. Thank you.
My name's Bill Ziegler, and I'm a neighbor of the Sugarmans. And I wanted to not go over all the good reasons for them to continue. What I'd like to tell you is that I am a public servant, as you are. Oh, and I'm retired, as my wife are, from public service. One of the things you do to protect yourself is to, as a firefighter, my wife's a captain, is to think ahead of a situation. And as Bubba did, went out and bought fire equipment just in case. And just to let you know, besides the Sugarmans, the Zieglers have fire equipment. My next-door neighbor, a retired LA Fire Department, has fire equipment. We have pumps to throw into the pool. And if all fails, then we would hook up to the Olivenhein Water District. Now, the thing is, we don't get, because we're not in the city of Encinitas, to the Fire Department. They don't check our equipment. So the only people that are gonna check the fire equipment or the fire hydrants or the water sources is the people that are going to benefit from it. I've spoken with Olivenhein Water. They come out all the time, but they do not check the hydrants. So having that ability to protect yourself is necessary. The last thing I'd like to say is, as far as caring for the animals, I have personally witnessed Elizabeth walking an injured Percheron draft horse because it was unable to be ridden and to help it heal. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that does conclude public speakers. However, we have approximately 35 individuals who registered support for the Sugarman's but chose not to speak. Did you want me to go by each name?
I don't think we need to.
Well, insert it into the public record.
Unless anybody wants their name said.
They'll put it in the public record for the minutes.
Put it in the public record. That's a good way to do it. With that, we'll move on to rebuttals. The first will be the applicant. So you go first, five minutes.
Thank you. Thank you all. And thank you for listening. We're really grateful to be here tonight. Our hope is that shedding light on the whole issue and working so hard and so long with the city to come into compliance and to find how to apply the ag permit to our property and work with the city. We're really grateful that we have this opportunity to really find clarity. I feel like a lot of the strife and the tension is really a misunderstanding. And it is my hope and prayer that we will come away from this meeting with clarity and that we can go forward and restore peace to our neighborhood because it is a beautiful place to live, and I think we can all live there in harmony. That's my wish. So just generally, we refute all the claims found in the appeal. And further, we respectfully request that the traffic mitigation fee be waived. And I believe you already have a memo on that. And Anna's gonna speak to it?
I'm happy to, after your presentation. Yes.
I'll conclude.
So now we'll hear from the appellant, also five minutes. No, come on. We want due process. Everybody's being fair here. We'll be fair.
I know, I appreciate that, honestly. I, again, wanted to start by saying, I am not saying that I want Sugar Sweet Farm to go away. go away. I'm saying that I want the codes that are set. And as emotional as that was and all those heartfelt memories, most of those memories were with activities that went on continually for four years, unpermitted. I didn't make the rules. I'm just trying to make certain that they're enforced. You know, if you take the emotion out of it, the fact of the matter is, goat yoga is not permitted. Youth camps are not permitted. When I received the original Sugerman Agriculture Permit approval, I said, okay, I mean, let's look at this closely. Doesn't seem that unreasonable. And again, Mayor, this is what I really want to establish right now before, you know, any decisions are made. The agricultural permit to establish a community garden allows small animal keeping of 26 to 100 animals, small-scale agricultural production, and a temporary food stand. Sounded reasonable. When I went over this with Jay in his office, I said, hey, what about the mention? And by the way, Mr. Penegras in Planning also reiterated that those were the rules that were established for the ag permit. And I, not events. And again, somehow, events got slid in to this approval process. I am not arguing the ag permit. What I am arguing is that there's been an element sort of included in there, sort of added, just for no, with no merit. When I talked to Jay, he said, no, I said, hey, what about putting language in? No events, no goat yoga, no youth camps. He even brought up the fact, he goes, no, youth camps won't be permitted because the Sugermans would have had to provide a curriculum, and we're not going down that route. I said, okay, great. He goes, yeah, the maximum number of cars you're probably going to be dealing with is like 10. So again, I just want to understand why the agricultural permit is spelled out very clearly to just do a community garden, small animals, ag, and temporary food stand. All of the stories I heard, and they were amazing, honestly. Not trying to take memories away from like the youth of Encinitas. I'm literally just going, please, follow the code. They broke the code for four straight years. We brought the notification of the code, and it's still being advertised. It's still listed on social media. I mean, remove yourself from the emotion of it and just look at what the actual code says. In regards to a couple of like personal things that were brought up, specifically the Nancaros, the tree that they mentioned that they trimmed was a 50-year-old tory pine. I'm sorry, those are actually endangered. Am I the bad guy that those, you know, that I had to encroach them and go, wow, you cut my tory pine tree down? That's like ridiculous. So I wanted to say that. As far as the 40-foot easement goes, it's right there in my papers. It says 40-foot easement, private road easement. So not making that up. They weren't granting me anything. As far as the videos go, I did not own their property, but I was instructed by City Council to document this for code enforcement. That's all that I was doing. There were no kids playing in the fire hydrant. We saw that fire hydrant go. It wasn't for fire protection. It was going directly across the street under the Sugermans' property. There were never any Bs in the complaint. And I did mention at the beginning that the quarry had met with the Sugermans, which was awesome, to address the animal that she saw neglect or need or whatever. So that's not a problem. Bottom line, there's like no goat yoga allowed. There's no private events allowed. And again, these aren't my codes. If you look at your own municipal code, Section 3033.04G, "An applicant for an agriculture permit shall be approved upon satisfying the following findings: not some, but all. Appropriate controls are in place that ensure the project does not have a negative impact on adjacent neighbors, their owners and occupants." I contend it is. Between the traffic and the fact that it's going on unpermitted, I get it. Like, those are all great stories. I'm not trying to take away memories. Not trying to be the bad guy. It's just, there's codes in place for a reason, and you do this. I'm fine with them continuing what they've had. I'm fine with them doing what is ever permissible and allowed under the city codes. But I'm really not fine with them blatantly abusing the law and not, you know, living up to those codes. So please check into that event thing because that is language that needs to be addressed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I will now close the public hearing, and we will have our discussion and deliberation. I can hop in here. It's in my area. I probably have more history than most on it if I can. And then, oh, I got everybody wants to talk then. I'm going to kick it off. But where do I start? I think I'm going to go to some clarification questions that I held off on earlier. First of all, small animal, large animal limits. I've heard horses on the property, which obviously I think are large animals, especially draft horses. What is the current limit? What's the proposed limit for an ag, the zoning and the ag on this property, the ag permit, for large and small?
You have a few questions there, so let me sort out your questions. We prepared a slide ahead of time. Here's small versus large animals. Code identifies large animals, bovine, sheep, goats, and swine. And then, small animals shall mean poultry, rabbits, chinchillas, hamsters, pygmy goats, pigs, goats, sheep, miniature horses, and other small domesticated animals. Other than large or specialty animals, specialty animals are in another code section. I do have a chart here. Hold on. So there, large animals, for example, horses, have another category. And we did not evaluate that because it was permitted by right depending on the acreage. All right? So you get two for the property and then one more for each additional half acre over a one acre. So if you do the math for the 2.6, it's basically a maximum of five horses. But they do not have any horses on site. What was the rest of your question?
Isn't it, they get two plus five, seven?
No. Two plus one for every half acre over one acre.
Oh, over one acre.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry.
So five. Five horses. So, and so what about other large animals? Is there a limit? If you take, right now, you say that's bovine, sheep, goats, and swine. So hogs would fall in that category. Excuse me. Yeah. Let me ask my question. So I'm trying to get facts out here because that's what we have to base our decisions on. So I'm just trying to understand, what are the limits for the number of small animal, large animal? Because I think I've seen 26 to 100 small animals.
Right. So here, hopefully you guys can read that. This is a snapshot from the 3055 Animal Regs, this chart that we rely on, as it's organized by column, by zone. So the property is Zone RR, Rural Residential. It's that first column. So if you read left to right, so large animal keeping is activity number three, horses and others permitted by right. But the qualification there is the number as described. And then, number four, interestingly, has a separate category for horses and in addition to other large animals, same as number three, but for some reason, I can't explain why the code had written, but it was called out for Olivenhein specifically. But for purposes of what you're asking, permitted by right. And then, number six is small animal raising. So basically, 0 to 25, if you will, is permitted by right. 26 to 100 is, requires an A ag permit.
Okay. So that covers, I think you covered that question for me. So five plus up to 100 small animals. What was the other area? We'll tell you what, I will yield to, and I'll come back, Councilmember San Antonio.
Can I ask a couple of questions as well? So, let's see. Can you specify the, like, the particular requirements for an ag permit that the Sugermans meet? Are there any identified, or are there any as you identified that may need to change if we choose to issue this permit? Are they pushing the envelope at all, like, as far as like what they can do under this permit?
I'm not entirely, so as far as the ag permit goes, we included, sorry, all the conditions of approval that were appropriate for the project to not have any negative impacts on the adjacent properties. So we relied upon all the code sections in 3055 as it relates to animals. And we also have the, well, and enclosures and maintenance of all those, making sure odor is controlled and all of that. And then, in addition, the actual urban ag ordinance, 3033, that is probably where we would, not probably, where we would start initially. And then, the criteria there is shown on page six of 16 of the original approval. And we go in this table, line by line, demonstrating how either they comply, that section doesn't comply, or we've conditioned to make it apply.
And I could add, to answer your question, so the scope of work of what they're providing, the animals, the community garden, the temporary food stand, those are all allowed, including animal grazing and raising, which is, I saw that Jay had a slide up that defined what that is, which includes 4H in there. So those uses would be allowed. So the conversations that we've had with the applicant had to do with making sure that it didn't meet a kind of a commercial operation. And so that's why we arrived at the scope of work that we did in front of you.
All right. I'll yield for right now. Councilmember O'Hara.
Okay. So I've got a lot on this one. There are two other permits in town. I happen to have pulled one of them with the Carter Farmers Market. So is Robert Green here? Robert, I want to thank you for your email. I thought it was great. I thought it hit the point of this. And what I would say, I want to thank Janet for your comments, and even Elizabeth Sugerman. You touched on this about living peacefully together, which is what I think we're tasked to do here. And one of the reasons I say that is that, I can tell you from having pulled an ag permit, it is obtuse in a lot of ways. It's not a very clear process, a very clear permit to pull. And there are a lot of questions you go through and processes that are hard to quantify. And I think, Elizabeth, you saw that in that code they had up there, 30.04.010, where goats and sheep were in both categories for big and small animals. And so I want to go through a couple of questions, and I've got more to go, but I want to hear what everybody else has to say up here before I go into deep dive on it. But I want to get these questions answered first. I think, you know, within this, it does come back to codes, the ordinances, and what the permit is built out like. And so I want to get some questions on this. So I'm going to get into them. The first one is, I read on here, 10 parking spaces, and I'm looking at their diagram and says there's 46 parking spaces. The parking spaces I see attached are to the community garden. Can staff go through that? And will it be limited to 10 parking spaces? Or will they have the other 36?
So when the project was first submitted, one of our first initial comments, usually when a project first comes in, we're really just trying to understand what's going on in the fog or review. And so their scope of work when they first submitted was a much larger scope of work. And since then, and then through that next year, as you saw in the timeline, we whittled them down to what ultimately what was approved. So such that we have, we went from showing 45 parking spaces to showing 10 parking spaces because that really was the requirement.
My next question is for the fire marshal. Is there a risk that when you pull up to a fire hydrant, if they're attaching their own equipment to it, that they will damage that fire hydrant? And when you get there, you will not be able to use it?
Yes.
And I'd asked staff, were you able to determine the percentage of delivered or returned public notices? Were we able to look into that? I know it was short notice.
No, no worries. The project was notified twice, first with the CBP and then the actual legal notice towards the end of the project. 27 notices were mailed out. For the legal notice that happened in December, only two envelopes came back. So that's less than 10%. As for the CPP, I would have to defer to the applicant because their responsibility is to mail it out and have the meeting. So I would have to defer to them.
Can you just clarify that?
You'll have to come up to the microphone. We have to reopen the public hearing.
We didn't have any returned envelopes.
And did you mail out 27?
Yes.
I didn't see, we had a comment about sound. We talked about sound. Is there, because there are other permits in town that are experiencing this issue, is there a sound rating that we are holding this permit to on an ag permit?
A sound rating? Oh, well, we do have in the code, we have the performance standards. As far as light, sound, they're all batched in the same. So the default is that we would go to that first. So there was, we didn't condition accordingly.
Okay. And I did read the road is an existing condition. Did we inspect the animal shelter and animal welfare?
We know they have animal enclosures on site. As far as the welfare, that's not our job. It would have to be, you would have to go to make the complaint to the San Diego Humane Society, which is under the county.
Okay. So it doesn't fall under the ag permit? The shelter does, but the welfare does not, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then, maybe this is only for my own personal notification, but how do we enforce or measure odor? I see that listed on here in a couple of places, and I'm not really sure. I'm not sure.
Odor is also, well, it's a condition of approval, but I understand everybody's nose is a little different. I get that. It would just be a complaint made. We have a condition of approval, and we would send the team out to check it out. I mean, but associated with that is, we would also probably look at, sorry for using the word probably, looking at how they're taking care of it, how often, because it does state that the manure has to be put in a contained, you know, container until EDCO comes out, picks it up once a week. So.
Okay. Make sure I've got a lot of questions. I'm going to go to the mall just now. Okay, I think I'm going to be back, but I'm going to yield.
Okay. Councilmember Schaefer.
Thank you, Mayor. A quick question about the goat yoga, as far as, so if they are doing an event like that, or just having friends over is what it sounds like, and they're not doing it for profit, what does that have to do with their permit? Or is it required to have a permit for that?
Having goats is one thing. Having people over is another. So as long as goat yoga is not a commercial activity, they can have friends and family over.
Okay. That's the only question I have on top of all the other questions that have come. But from the community, I think it's a outcry from a significant portion of our community and what our lineage is. And I couldn't agree more with 100% of everybody that came up here and talked. So I'll just leave it there for right now.
Councilmember San Antonio.
I have another question. So if there was a special event, is there a process that they have to go through in order to hold that? Or is it kind of contained under their ag permit?
It's not contained under the ag permit. Here on the screen, I have a definition of the special events permit. Special events permits are handled by the Park and Recs Division. What's key here is if, if you let me read it, "Special event means any scheduled or planned event occurring with the city that impacts the normal use of public or private property, disrupts the normal flow of traffic or access to public property or public right-of-way, and which can reasonably be expected to require support by the city and county government and/or personnel. Typical of events include celebrations, festivals, fairs, musical gatherings, organized aquatics, sporting or similar events, and may include live or amplified music and/or stage, may include the sale of alcohol requiring an ABC permit and/or associated regs, and the use of booths or vendors." It is a totally different animal, pun intended.
Can I interject? Impacts of normal use of public or private property, "normal" can mean a lot of things. So does that mean "normal" as in what they considered, and again, this is because the agricultural permit is so vague, is the, I'm not going to say it's vague, it flexes. We'll say it, that's a better way to put it. Is this, how do we define what is "normal" for this instance?
Normal, we know, oops. So we know that it's a single-family home generates X number of trips that is existing. We also calculated that there's probably an additional 28 trips via the use, that was permitted via the use permit on top. And so I'm not sure if I'm answering your, answering what defining "normal" is, but through the, not use permit, I'm sorry, through the ag permit, it's, we've approved it.
So is it based on the activity or the number usage? I'm hearing it's based on car trips and not based on what the activity is?
So the activity was assigned, the use was assigned a trip, an estimated trip. That was the only way we can evaluate the traffic pattern.
And that's regardless of what the use is, whether it's picking apples or petting a goat?
Sure. Understood.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the clarification.
Okay, I'll hop in here now. The, I want to ask a couple more questions, and I'll go speak more. The easement, if I look at the drawing, my recollection is that easement is, they both own rights on the other's property for a total of 80 feet or 40? 40 feet? Or is it only all on, is easement all on the Sugerman's property?
So if you can see my figure there, I'm trying to show, so the figure on the left, the color picture, is what we have, just for graphic purposes. The black and white is taken from the original 1972 map, which is also included on, is one of your attachments. The green square is the Sugerman property. So there's two overlaying easements there. One with the yellow highlight, highlighted note, is a IOD deeded to the County of San Diego for, and I, for an IOD for, and I, this document, a public highway. I'm just putting it out there, for that stretch. And the, with the map, you see there's a thinner 40-foot wide easement, and I tried to show it there with a red fill. That's the 40-foot private road easement that would serve the four lots.
So, engineer, the yellow lot is the appellant's home.
The green, the green square. Oh, the appellant is the yellow home. That is correct, yes.
Yeah. The applicant, or the applicant and the neighbor split the easement, not the appellant, not the, not the.
Right. But the neighbor's, neighbor's prop, no, the appellant has rights to the entire easement. The IOD, I assume, has not been exercised?
I don't know if it's been accepted or not.
Probably not, right? It's an irrevocable offer of dedication. So it's kind of superfluous. The easement that the house is owned in common is the ability to access that full 40 feet, 20 feet on the Sugerman's property, 20 feet on.
That's Mr. Green's property.
Mr. Green's property. Yeah. So I think we understand the easement's there. It's for, it may be on, half on the Sugerman's property, half on the Green's property, but it's for the use of egress and ingress by all the neighbors. So, okay. So I don't see any problem with the easement, the way it's constructed or legally right now. I wanted to talk about the event permit, but I want to throw one more wrinkle in there, and that is, what about commercial operations? At what point does an event become commercial?
The primary land use of the property is rural residential, which is a single-family zone, one house, one lot. No commercial activity is permitted. So for example, at one point early in the conversation, when we were talking about goat yoga, straight up, goat yoga is defined as group exercise. It is a commercial activity. Therefore, it is prohibited in the zone.
Okay. It's because. Okay, it's because charging for people to be there, or, or does it, does it require a fee? Or if people just come for goat yoga, is that commercial?
Commercial is a commercial transaction, an exchange of money.
Does that require, like, if they're advertising for it? Like, if, if the city, if you get a code enforcement complaint, what, what I'm exploring right now is what are the limits of the ag permit? And what are, what are going to ultimately be, you know, what's the line? I'm trying to draw the line in the sand so I can understand what's over, what's under, it's really, I think what the appellant said finally, what they're looking for, and it's certainly what I'm looking for. And I believe goat yoga is right now prohibited, yet when I hopped on the internet last night and I checked out the webpage, it, the statement is on there about come, you know, we enjoy hosting, I think, veterans, wounded veterans for goat yoga, and it's, it's on the website today, and I, you know, and I can understand, and I have testimony in front of me that says the goat yoga continued after being told. So what I want to get to tonight is, what are the limits? And, and then later, we'll talk about what happens if the limits are exceeded? What's the process whereby any code complaint goes through the process? And at what time can we revisit a permit? But, so, what I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, staff, is that commercial operations are not allowed there beyond what is permitted explicitly in the ag permit for selling produce and products made from the farm? That essentially?
Yes, I will add that there are other uses listed within the zoning use matrix that are permitted by rights, such as the animal grazing and raising. So there are other uses that are permitted by right, which we do not include in the scope of work for an ag permit. So we, we kept it at the limits of what an ag permit requires. But we did go through this exercise many times with the applicant of trying to define those lines, and it was difficult to do, and that's why the scope of work did get smaller. So, but yes, we would love to conclude on that as well.
Okay, and, and I will try and in the end here, gather all this up into maybe some additional conditions of approval, and I think staff had one, but let me, let me go to another area, which is traffic. Traffic, right now, we're saying 28 additional over the single-family use. Single-family use based on the sand egg numbers would be 12 plus 28. 40 total car trips estimated. That's not a hard number, that's not a hard line, it doesn't mean if you bring 41 cars someday, the 41 trips someday, that that would, that's not a hard limit. But, the reason I think it's an important thing to cite in here and get for the record is if there's a future accusation of a use that is 150 cars trips a day, or, you know, where it's on a regular basis, that, that becomes a basis for looking at this ag permit and potentially questioning it, so I'd want it in there. Parking, I think right now, and this is one a little harder of a line, parking is, or I should say, a little finer of a line in the sand. Parking, I think we've said 10 is required? They can provide more? Can they have more cars parked there at any given time?
It's a big property. You could, I hate to use this analogy, but it's true, you could be a car collector and park all your cars. You could have 17 teenagers and have 17 cars. We don't have a limitation on the, how many cars one could own. That's, so, we parked one, one community plot to one user, you know.
Okay, so, so again, parking would be like traffic, it's not a hard, hard limit, but it could be an indicator of intensification of use, because the one thing, I think, if we go forward and approve this tonight, we'll want to draw that line in the sand, and we'll want metrics such as parking, traffic, events, that type of stuff that shows this is permissible, this is an indicator it's intensified, because what we don't want to, and by the way, this all runs with the land, so future landowners, if you ever sell, future landowners can take, and this has happened in other, other cases, I'm, I'm not saying with you, but future landowners sometimes push the limit, so. So I've got commercial events. Sequa, that's the, the one thing that was mentioned in, in the appeal and the letter. This could certainly be, the sequa finding by the city could be challenged. I believe there was a letter there from Ari Spangler, who is a local lawyer, who correctly says, in my opinion, I would like staff's opinion, the burden of evidence is to challenge the sequa, the city's sequa determination. That, that challenge is really, the burden is on the appellant, because the planning commission made a decision, found the preponderance of evidence that we, it was sequa exempt, and, and so therefore, that is the discretionary decision. Now, in order to appeal that, it would require some evidence of that. And quite frankly, the, the appellant's letter was one of the weaker sequa appeals I've ever read. There was no case cited, no nothing. By contrast, the Sugarman's letter from, or at least the letter from Ari Spangler cited case law, did a good job. I thought you made your point very, very well. So, I do not find any grounds for the sequa claim, so. So now, I'm going to do a little summary here, if I, I could, I could.
No, go.
You have questions, okay, then I will yield and I'll let Councilmember O'Hara, then I'll come do a summary.
I'd like to ask Tarquin, if we, Attorney Tarquin, if we can, if I, if I might for you to ask how many events and how often the applicant is planning to have, if I can ask her that.
Yes, you can ask her that.
Could ask you to come up and.
Can, can I do one quick, one quick, you can get it, stand up there. I need a motion to extend past 10 o'clock.
Motion to extend.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion, a second. Call a question?
Sorry, hold on.
Yeah, little procedural thing here.
We're not allowed to go past 10 o'clock without us all agreeing.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay.
Okay, so just to repeat the question, it was, it was, what type of events and how often do you intend to have them?
Yeah, that's a great question. Our farm is, farm life is seasonal. There are times of year when there's a lot to share, there are times of year when the children are out, and we do our farm camp programs, which is a heavily, heavy activity time for us. Then we're doing daily programs with the children from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Monday through Friday during the summer, you know, for like 28 days of summer. We're doing that. There are months when we don't have any activity. There are months when we do farm events on the weekends primarily. That's when most people come out, usually our events are at 10:00 AM. Sometimes we'll do an after, a morning event and an afternoon event, just kind of depending on the interest of our community, also our personal schedule. This farm, this project is a hobby, so we plan our family life and then fit in events around it. So I, I don't have a hard and fast answer for you because of the seasonal nature, because this is our, it's a project that, our programs are so varied. We've every, we, you know, host individual families, we host church groups, which would be more people. We never host more than 30 visitors. Most of them come together because it's families coming out, so it's, it reduces the number of trips. We always, everything is by appointment only, we have no drop-ins. Until this appeal was filed, our address wasn't even published, but now everyone has it. We do that to protect the children and the animals, so that there couldn't be no drop-in traffic.
Would you be able to go back and quantify how many you had last year if you went back and your records encountered?
Zero last year because we were closed.
The last year of operation, I'm sorry, I should have clarified.
I don't, no, I, I.
Okay.
I really don't know.
Okay, that's okay, I'm just trying to get information. And is there anything you do educationally that requires you to have a state license that you may or may not have?
No.
Okay. Temporary food stand, I see that it's 12 hours a week. I'm sorry, don't go yet.
Sorry.
Just chiseling information. Temporary food stand that you're operating, it's 12 hours a week. Do you have all of the county paperwork that goes along with selling food at a food stand?
So we don't have a food stand, we have a farm stand. So we would sell things that we grow on our own property, we're covered for all of that, or our own cottage products, that's also covered by cottage product regulations that you can sell, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Yeah, I was just going to see if, is this one of those permits that we could run with the owner versus the land? Can, can we run the?
I'm sorry.
Could we go to, could we have this permit run with the owner and not the land?
So it, use, excuse me, this is not a use permit, this is an agricultural permit, and we are required to record a covenant, which goes on title, which then runs with the land. And I, I'm unaware of any allowances for us to remove that specifically for one specific project. I don't know if there's anything else Tarquin would want to add to that.
Yeah, we really need to look into that a little deeper to answer that question, probably would not be answered here tonight. I tend to agree it would run with the land, the way it's currently designed.
Obviously, the owner is on that property now, but as, so the owner, while on, in that covenant, would be okayed with that, but at the, at the, at the sale of a property or something of that nature, or it may, may lapse, I guess, at that point.
Yeah, thank you. Certainly, Councilmember, I certainly understand the question you're asking. Typically, a license would be one with the person who's issued the license, but a use permit, or here an agricultural permit typically runs with the land. So a new owner would be bound by all the conditions of the agricultural permit, once that was issued.
Got it.
Councilmember San Antonio.
All right, if you're done. Okay.
Well, if you're, I guess, if you're going to try to summarize this, I guess I'll just say my, my piece. It's a, I, I believe somebody just showed that slide of our, our NCS logo. It has a horse on there. It's inherently in NCS's DNA. We were started as ag land, I, I mean, they're, and I think in our strategic plan, we talked about, I mean, our, one of our last meetings, we talked about, our planning meeting, we talked about it being rural ranch, or something like that, was it?
Yeah, it was, it was during our strategic. It was during our strategic planning conference, we were talking about our, our vision and our vision statement of being a, an ag rural urban community.
Yeah, and so, I mean, we, we've talked about the, what the land, what this land or what NCS is inherently started as and what we think of it as, we, yes, we are coastal, but there's Olivenheim, which is ag land. I mean, I, I lived over by the beach, and I was like, I don't want to move over by, over in Olivenheim, it's, it's the sticks. One week later, I love it, I loved it, I don't, I don't ever want to move. You know, a decision like this, it's not, it can't really be rooted in, you know, a person's good word or likability. Clearly, this is, the farm is such a great addition to Olivenheim, everybody seems to really love it. But, what we really have to do is, is decide on this, like Mayor Eller said, is, it's on code. We have to, they have to abide by city code, which is what we govern the city by. And it seems to me that under the ag permit, Sugar Sweet Farm has addressed each one of those, each and every one, and we went down that list, I believe there was about 10 of them. Whether or not they were in compliance previously, I mean, I, I've sped before, I didn't get a ticket. It doesn't mean I should get a, I guess maybe I should get a ticket from all those other ones, but if they're in compliance now, and they continue to be in compliance, I, I don't see why they shouldn't be granted this permit. I mean, I, I guess in the, in the, in, in going with the, how the other neighbors feel as well, because I did see some, some of the neighbors, you know, there were, there were a couple of things that they didn't like, but to Karen, Karen who spoke first, you know, she was, she's a goat, a goat enthusiast, I guess.
Corey Bowell, you mean?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Was she the, the goat enthusiast, but she was, she was wearing the shirt, she was wearing Sugar Sweet, Sugar Sweet Farm shirt. She didn't agree with everything, she wanted some things changed, and you guys were, were happy to, to want, take care of your animals, collaborate with her, and she acquiesced, she was like, okay, I'm, I'm in for this. So I, I think, I, you know, we all want to live in a neighborhood that we can all be, have peace. I mean, I, I don't want to be fine with my neighbor either. But I, like I said, I feel like you, that if it's just the ag permit, and that's what we're talking about right now, then I feel like we, that Sugar Sweet Farms has definitely addressed each one of those, and if they're in compliance with it right now, I don't see why we, why we wouldn't grant it, or why we wouldn't uphold it.
Thank you.
And I'll just, I'll leave it there.
I would like to address just a couple of comments. So, the, the educational, the tours and things like that, they are, stand, as standalone, they're not allowed uses in a single-family zone. However, if this council looks at those types of uses as accessory to, and as the mayor mentioned, putting some parameters around it, then that's the direction that staff would like to seek, because we originally were not comfortable with doing that, so speaking to the urban ag uses. So that's something that I wanted to make sure was stated. And then the second was to Elizabeth Sugarman, who spoke about the traffic mitigation fees. I just wanted to address that, it's within our municipal code that states that traffic mitigation fees are required, and there's three exemptions that are listed, and this one didn't qualify as one of those exemptions. And we did have discussions around urban ag permits in general, and when that requirement would be exempt or not. And so we just simply stated that that's not within staff's purview to, to waive a fee, and that's why she's bringing it before the city council, because the city council is the authorizing body who can do such a thing.
Thank you.
How much was the fee?
Okay.
Can I?
I think I may cover your, let me, let me go.
Okay, go ahead.
Are you done?
Yes, he is.
Yes, sir.
I'll yield, okay. So just on the mitigation, we've had two other ag permits. Did we, did the council, prior councils waive the traffic mitigation fees in those, in that, those two cases? Do we know?
For the Cardiff Farmers Market, yes, because it was public or governmental purposes. Basically, it was a nonprofit. And then for the other one, I'm sorry, I forgot the name. We can't determine, it was so long ago, whether or not we required the fee to be paid or not.
So was it the first ag permit, basically the genesis?
Yes.
For the ag permit process, okay. So I, I want to, I want to talk about, I'm going to go back to my summary and kind of follow up on what Councilmember San Antonio said. The ag permit process started in 2016, as I recall, this is only the third one, but this is precisely the situation it was intended for. It is, how do we, how do we keep ag in our, you know, you look at the horse on the, on the logo. I'm so glad Richard and Twink Boomin are here. I mean, aren't you, aren't you, yeah. Aren't you glad you didn't have to get an ag permit? But just, you know, because you've, over the years, had cattle, raised crops, bees and honey and the, and the whole bit for 100 years plus, right? So, this, this is, now I grew up, I was very fortunate, I grew up, my dad grew up on a farm. My, I was close enough, my grandfather farmed until I was out of college, and I was cheap labor on weekends, so I had a lot of the experiences you're talking about, and it is fantastic. And, and I think it's what, what we're trying to do. I remember shopping at the Christmas tree farm down at Keeta Lane, back just beyond on, on the other two properties 40 years ago. And the one thing I was surprised Bob Pendergast didn't bring up is he's got a full operational nursery, kitty corner, two, right behind him, what?
I only had two minutes.
Two, two houses away, so, so.
On an easement road.
On, on an easement road, yeah, so, so there is ag industry right there. Boomin's, whatever, and, and we do want to keep it. Boomin's, whatever, and, and we do want to keep it, it's about, and I've been fighting for this for 25 years, community character. This is probably one of the most important portions of our community character I can imagine in a Levenhein where we define it as rural. Two, two of my daughters learned to ride horses at stables in the Levenhein, got to ride the trails around a Levenhein, you know, I've, it's, and they love horses now, and my daughter leases one and takes care of it because she learned in a Levenhein. So, I view this as the poster child, or a poster child for ag permits. That said, however, we have to all live together, and, and I think the opponent had some points that we need to incorporate into an approval, and I do support an approval, or I should say a denial of the, the appeal, but I would add several, several conditions of approval. I would like to see us formally define large and small animals, just as it did, at least reference the code. I think it's SCA, Special Condition A7. It's pretty terse right now, I would add that maximum five large animals, and large animals are defined in this section of code, and up to 25, 26 to 100 small animals, I guess it's up to 100 small animals, and these are defined as in the code. That's one thing I would add. I think you had another one about county health conditions you wanted to add, that staff wanted to add, so that's the second one I would add. I would add, in the current one, SCA9, Special Condition 9, Condition of Approval 9, says that the manure or waste products will be removed regularly, I would put at least weekly, I want a hard limit in there, and that's where odor comes from, and having been on Planning Commission a long time, we've dealt with quite a few manure odor issues over the years. So, I think if we put at least weekly, that should more than do it, and I think you already have that it has to be in an enclosed container, which it is today. Traffic mitigation fees, I'm on the fence on that one, so I'll wait to hear from, from the rest of, rest of the others. I think the permit, the covenant in there, I support, that's already in there, we don't need to add anything. Let's talk event limits. I think that's the, the crux of the problem here, is how do we, how do we put limits, and I'll look to staff to make a recommendation, you know, is it maximum 30 people? I'd like a couple of hard limits in there. Frequency, periodicity, you know, can it be every night of every day? Limits on, on hours of operation, that type of stuff. Anything we would do in, in other use permits, I think we can put here, and, is this a use permit too? No, it's not, it's just an ag permit?
And, yes.
Okay, and it's an ag by right, but it's not an event permit. So, I still think it'd be worthwhile putting some limits on the ag use, because it borders on commercial, you know, do we say no commercial operation, other than explicitly allowed in the ag permit?
Yes.
And this is an opportunity for staff to weigh in and give us some recommendations, but I'm looking for harder limits.
Yes, it's a little bit more difficult on the events and, and tours and things like that, it would be better to know what the desire is from the applicant, because I wouldn't want to place something that either fully restricts them, or is way beyond that where if it passes over to another owner.
And that's why I'm not worried about necessarily exactly what the applicant wants. I want to put bounds in there that are measurable and can actually be enforced, and it may be a maximum number of people for events.
Is this for ag permits, or is this for specifically for this one?
This is for the ag permit. What I'm trying to make sure is we have enforceable limits, and then after we get through this, I just want to talk a short time about how, the enforcement mechanisms, and what would happen should, you know, should, should something be exceeded by the current owner or future owner, so...
So I have heard of the maximum capacity of 30 people from the applicant, so that could be a limit there. That one would be, it's still a little difficult to, there would have to be proof of, of that if there was a violation, but at least there is a capacity or limit on it. So that would be one, and then if you wanted to do something like having, you know, one per weekend, or, you know, four a month of larger events, maybe the capacity of 30 people of only four, or whatever number comes forward, that can be something...
Could we do that as part of an ag permit?
As an ag permit, yes, because the findings that are, that need to be made to make sure that it doesn't impact the community, and so putting limits on it is appropriate.
Precisely, because that, that's the one thing I did forget, was to recap the findings we have to make for an ag permit, and they're four separate ones. Appropriate controls are in place that ensure the project does not have a negative impact on adjacent properties, their owners and occupants, or the surrounding neighborhood. The proposed location, size, height, operations, and other significant features of the use will be compatible with, and is appropriate to the area in which it's located. The proposed use does not negatively affect the environment, and has adequate safeguards, and then the proposed use is consistent with land uses by the zone, which we've already talked about, so. So I think under that first one, we would be within our ability to say, in order to ensure that the ag use does not have a detrimental effect on neighboring properties, or occupants, we could limit certain sizes, certain frequencies, so...
Yeah, Mayor Ellers, if I could, if I could opine, the city council clearly has the discretion to, this is a discretionary permit, you clearly have the discretion to put limits and conditions of approval on this project.
Thank you. So, I can recognize, or I can make a motion if you want me to. How about if I do my motion, and then you do a friendly amendment to it?
Hold on one sec. You can come back to me on this, you do your friendly motion, and I'll add on to it, but I, I want to address Sugarman's again. I understand there's an ADA compliance issue on the property.
ADA?
I was told, I was, during the inspection, there was a adjustment to the ADA complacency that needed to be addressed?
No, it was being questioned whether or not they had to submit for a building permit to show compliance with ADA, but the Sugarmans are moving forward with that building permit, and will be complying.
Okay, so, Councilmembers, before we move forward, before we get to your motion, I would be willing to trade, trade the traffic mitigation fees for completion of that ADA as part of this. I know we're not into the motion yet, but if we can all agree upon that being part of the motion that you're gonna make.
I, oh, hear from, I see, I see at least one yes.
No, that's, that's basically...
I see two yes, yeah.
Yeah, and for the sake of time, but yeah, let's, motion, do we make it, or? I, I motion to deny the appeal and waive the fees in conjunction with an ADA compliant property.
And then add the definition for small and large animals, specifically the limit numbers and what they are, and also weekly for the manure removal?
So, so the, the discrepancy of large and small is not on their behalf, it's on ours.
Correct, that's what I'm saying, the motion is for them.
So that's, that's we have to change, I don't think they have to, that's up to us to fix and define what that is on this permit.
No, no, I think, I think we have it defined well in the code, I think Jay showed that.
No, he showed 30.04010, and they were clearly defined as both. Sheeps and goats were in both categories. Yeah, I mean, clear as day, that, that code needs to be redone.
Well, so, so what I am suggesting is that we define it in this condition of approval, so that there is no ambiguity today.
For this condition of approval, for this, yes.
And, and so, you know, sheep, I'm okay with sheep being in small animals, but I'm not okay with llamas being in small animals, they're large animals, I think bovine and horses, and hogs technically are large animals typically, and I think that's what it shows here, where it says swine.
And it's pigs down there.
So pigs, pigs, just to be clear, pigs are typically the piglets, and hogs are the older ones, but at least that, when, growing up with a farm, you know...
I will say the...
But that's why we're here, that's why, you just proved my point about why I want to define it here.
So needless to say, needless to say, so we're having this defined on this actual permit for our, for our permitting process going forward, so yes.
So that we make the line clear.
Sure.
Yeah, so, and if we want to put pigs on, on small animals, you know, so be it, but I think that's also a code cleanup we're gonna, I'm gonna add to my list.
Yeah. So, Chair, I'm sorry, Mayor Ellers, I'm used to being Chair, if I could sort of opine on the intent of the zoning code. So if you look at Animal Small, it says show me poultry, rabbits, chinchillas, hamsters, pygmy goats, pigs, goats, sheep, miniature horses, and other small domesticated animals. I read pygmy goats, pygmy pigs, and pygmy sheep, all being small, because you look at a relationship to Animal Large, which also has bovine animals, sheep, goats, and swine, swine or pig, right? So that's, that is the way I would interpret it, if you want to, if the planning, if the city council wants to interpret it that way, in relation to this permit, then I think the definition of a small animal is consistent.
Okay.
Okay, so I think we need to identify what they have, and I think we would want to start with an inventory, and, and just to make sure we're not having them have to get rid of animals at this point, it seems they are under 100 animals overall. So, intention would not be to have them have to get rid of animals in this case. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to deny the appeal, and I've got some, some points that I'd like you guys to write down, and we can debate these points.
So wait, we, we have a motion on the floor right now, that Luke made.
That was for the, the exchange of the...
And then I, I was adding to it as a friendly amendment, and I think Luke agreed, so I have a motion on the floor, I'll second it, so we have a motion and a second, so...
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna add.
Are you asking for a friendly amendment?
I'm gonna ask for a friendly amendment, and I've got a few of them on here. First one is, I'd like to see an emergency, emergency preparedness plan that does not include our fire hydrant. We do not want anyone to die because the fire department could not hook up to a fire, to a fire hydrant out there, it's hugely important, and I know it sounds like I'm being nitpicky, but that is, in this day and age, a no-no. Okay, so I think we're good with that. We do, we're talking about the exchange of the ADA and the traffic mitigation fees. I would like to, and I believe this is already in the code, but I want to add, just to specific, make sure that we are mean, because this is not covered in the, the permit, the ag permit, must maintain any required county food permits to sell, in addition to any NCS permits. In order for the permit to be approved, the shelter modifications must be confirmed. I was out there, I didn't see any animals in poor welfare, I thought they were well taken care of, the property seemed to have the appropriate shelter, I'm not an expert, but to me, it looked fantastic. But it's been brought up as a concern, and I do think in all of this, the animal welfare is equally important as everything else, so, within that, I would like to propose that there are, in the first year, eight to 10 code check, code checks, which would cover the concerns about SCA7, SCA9, and SCA11, done at the choice of the city, and also, they can be dropped at the choice of the city. So if we only do five, and we decide that's all that was needed, that's great, but we have the opportunity to do eight to 10 unannounced visits. I think that is really important, because I think that is something that provides a state of mind, a state of peace of mind for the, for the neighbors. This is, this is about, these regulations we put in there are much about defining a, a good ag permit, as they are helping a neighborhood heal, coming together and providing a really great space, letting it thrive in a way that the rest of the residents can count on, on the, the variables around that. Last but not least, of the 10 parking spaces, I would like to propose a max use of 50 people, and that's based on, most cars fit about five people, 10 parking spaces at 50. 50, I would call them guests, so that, and the Sugarmans themselves aren't included in that number. I'm open on that number, I'm trying to come up with some number that's reasonable, they've put down 30, and I would say with the, with the youth classes, I would cut that, I would give that to 15, and I know they wrote seven to 12. And I think that this gives them a little bit of leeway to, to grow a little bit, but then also, I agree with you, we need to define how many events and what that looks like. I know the hours on here are very clear, and within that, we can go from there. So those are, those are my additions I'd like to add, and I, I feel confident that, that these are reasonable, I'm obviously willing to talk about them, and I, I, I think they provide, the picture Mayor Ellers is representing, is presenting, as far as putting some, some, tying this ag permit, and an ag permit, you know, maybe we, down the road, we need to start looking at different types of ag permits in the city, because the way, the way your farm operates, and the Cardiff Farmers Market is, night and day, right? And they're going on the same permit, and so, something we need to look at, right now we're looking at what's in front of us. And so, I think the way we work this out to the best interest of everybody, including, I think, your farm, is to put, to, to put these conditions on it.
If I may get a clarifying point?
Yes.
On one of them? We were just looking at what the municipal code allows for, so we weren't able to define them as educational institution, if you look at our definition of their code, and, but we were, were able to qualify them under the, I think it's daycare.
Got it, that's what I was gonna tell.
And so there is maximum capacities already built into the municipal code, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't going beyond them, or if we were, that it's specified, you know, that it's accessory to the urban agricultural use, or whatever that may be. And I just want a little clarification on whatever the code...
I see here it says 12, if we are bound by the 12, I would stick with it, if we're not, I would say the 15, but that's just me allowing for the flexibility.
And are we bound by the 12, using daycare as an accessory use to, to the ag?
So the ag, the ag permit allows you to sway from this, this is if we're just looking at, as a daycare center as defined, but if they're doing other educational things that are specific to the urban ag permit, then you can, you could probably put it at the 15 as you're, as you're stating, so I guess I was just getting clarity. So it, it would just need to be clear that whatever the educational piece that is happening, occurring on this property, that it's accessory to, if you don't want to define it under this, but if we're defining it under the daycare, then it has to be limited to the 12.
Okay, so, could we do accessory, educational, to the ag permit and single-family resident with a limit of, and we can pick a number like 30? That would be, I, 50 to me is getting pretty darn large, and, and I would rather start with 30, just so we have a good limit, and, yeah, I think you get into parking issues, and somehow I want to also establish that, you know, right now we have 10 off-street parking, by the way, just to confirm, there's no parking allowed on Fortuna Ranch or Akita, correct? Those are no parking zones anyway?
No, no parking.
So they, they literally have to park on their property? Okay, cool.
Can I make one stipulation? I just want to make sure we're clear, it's 30 guests.
30 guests, okay, does that include, how do you count volunteers and...
That's what he's saying.
Well, we can just, we can decide right now, guests, what is staff, who is guests? To me, staff is paid or required, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it would include volunteers, so...
So maybe it's, maybe it's...
That's why you're arguing the 30 is too low?
Yeah, yeah, that's why I'm saying it's too low.
So, and, and in your mind, are the 50 limited to the daycare accessory use, daycare and educational use?
So, so the 50 is if you're doing the daycare, and everyone who owns, owns a community garden shows up. That's the possibility, right? And so how do we do that, so that they're not out of, they don't have any control over who shows up at what time to work in their community garden? I mean, if they all show up at the same time, I mean, they do to some degree, it's their private property, but who knows? If they leave it open to try to be flexible, and all people show up at the same time, suddenly they've got over 30 people on their property.
So, and, and we're, I think it's already limited to 10 community gardens, right? That, that's in there, so that we, we would keep that, I'm assuming? So, I'm still working on the... So I'm still working on the, the educational component of the daycare accessory use to the urban ag permit, at, what, what's the pleasure of council members? What do you think, is the 50 for that reasonable limit, or 40? Split the difference, make it 40? How's that for a compromise?
I'm seeing if there's, if there's the educational and the other going on at the same time, because the educational, we hit 7 and 12.
I'm saying, once you hit 40 people, volunteers plus everybody on the property for a.
No.
Daycare use that would, couldn't, if it was purely daycare, it'd be limited to 12 customers plus a handful, it'd be limited probably below 20 typically. But now you've got the, you're blurring the line, so I do like the idea of having a all-encompassing number, because honestly, the volunteer component is part of the customer too, really, in many ways, because you're getting great, great experience there. So I, you know, I would say 40.
I agree with that, that's working with the volunteers. I still would exclude paid staff. Paid staff would be paid at the, like, with the 1099 or paid with W9.
I think that's, I, I prefer to keep it simple. 45, 50?
I'm gonna say add, add five more.
Add 45, okay. Phew, boy, it's a tough crowd here.
Yeah.
So, so now I think if I'm reading back, or just trying to, I've got waive the traffic mitigation fee, I've got add the definition for the number of small animals being less than 100, large animals less than five, with a definitive list of what's in, what's out, we'll get to that in a second. The maintain county food permits, you were asking for shelter modifications to meet what standard?
The three walls and a roof, I think were, were the standards, and a dry floor. Is she still here? She was.
Yeah, she's in the back.
Okay.
Ms. Blau.
And.
Correct.
Up to.
Animal welfare, shelter, regulations, for what you said.
Yeah, I, you, you can come up.
Make sure we're quoting you correctly.
Three walls, that you said?
Three walls and a dry floor.
And, and give us your name one more time, just to get it on the record.
My name is Cory Blau.
Cory, yeah, thank you, Cory. So, question from Councilmember O'Hara.
So under the animal welfare regarding shelters, you mentioned three walls and a dry floor, a roof and a drive, and dry floor? Okay.
And is that a standard, a county standard or something? Where, where did, where did that come from?
I mean, it's a general standard that sanctuaries comply with.
But it's, it's not like a.
It's not, it, you can't, you, you can't put it, you can't go find a code on it.
Okay.
But if you think about what animals need, just practically, what would you give your dog? So you should give a goat.
So.
A little flimsy, is what.
Yeah, that, that, Mike, Mike, you know, I understand, and I think they, they, I do think they treat their animals well.
Do you think that they should be living in mud in the freezing cold? That's what I'd like to ask.
I don't want to get into that now, thank, thank you for your input. Yeah, my, my grandparents' dog had a house, a little house, no heat, in Midwest winters.
Yeah, yeah.
Night and day difference, you know? He would have loved to have been out here. So I, I personally think that we're, we're stepping beyond the bounds of an ag permit there. I think that's a, through society for prevention of cruelty to animals. I also worry about the eight to 10 code checks, it's just being arbitrary in this case. I, I think certainly code complaint, we, we have a watchdog right next door, I don't want to weaponize, but.
That's what we're trying to, that's what we're trying to define against right now.
Well, that's, that's what we're trying, we're trying to say there's going to be eight to 10, so that he doesn't have to do it, and he doesn't do it because he knows we're taking care of it, she's taking care of it. We're actually doing the opposite of what you're saying, we're actually creating a safe, a safeguard on this tension between the residents by saying, hey, the city's going to check on this and make sure it's good. And I'm up for a different number, I, I do think it should be at least six, and it's just, I don't, I don't think they have any prob, I don't think they have anything to worry about, I've been on the farm, I've seen it, so.
Okay.
I don't even think it's a big deal, but I think it's just, hey, it, it's like we've talked about traffic control, and the fact that if we see officers sitting around town, people will adjust their behavior. I don't think they need to adjust their behavior, but it creates accountability, and their neighbor may feel better about it, and I think that's really important in this.
100%, I agree.
Okay, so how about, how about, how about six, just because we're going to have code enforcement driving from the coast all the way to the farthest reaches of Leavenine, that's about a 40-minute drive.
We just, we just paid for three more, this, earlier in this meeting.
What about hours of operation, frequent, what about events beyond the educational? We're almost there, folks, so bear with us.
Don't they just have to get the permit for the event, the special event? Isn't that normal?
So on that, we generally, the Park and Rec Department does not do permits on private property, so the permits that we do are events, it can be a private or a public event, but it's on public property, so we don't permit events on private property. But I think Tarquin had a comment.
Yeah.
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to clarify the motion on the portion regarding the code enforcement. So as I understand it, that is a mandatory at least six visits a month, is that accurate? Is that the intent?
No, annually, annually, yes.
A year, the first year.
All right, mandatory code enforcement inspection.
At the discretion of the city, time-wise and timeline, and of course, at the discretion of the city to do one, if we only want to do one, or to do all six.
Okay, but they certainly could do more than six if they wished.
Of course, yeah, if, if necessary, they could, for sure, but I think it's giving them the fairness of having a heads-up on it, and, you know, after the sixth, some sort of a notification of, you know, how often would you normally, after the sixth one, expect to have that? And if there's a reason after the sixth to have one within an abnormal time, we'll call it, annually or bi-annual, however long the permit has to be rechecked up, then we would have to tell them, obviously, at that point, right?
Well, so, so typically, I mean, the city has a discretion normally to enforce, you know, enforce the code, to do a code enforcement inspection, either based on probable cause, based on a complaint, or just on its own initiative to make sure they're complying with the complaint. It's inadvisable to put limits or conditions on code enforcement, as how's it going to conduct the complaint, how to conduct the inspection, or what type of notice they have to give them, because that notice is built into the law, the notice that has to be given for them to come on private property and so forth.
Sure.
If they need to get an inspection warrant, that's covered by, you know, the government code, the procedures they have to follow to do that.
Well, I think, and the intention of the spirit of it is, is to provide that layer of accountability for the residents, so it's really just pertains to the six, whether it's after that or not after that, it doesn't matter, but just that there will be six at least in the first year.
Certainly, that's, that's certainly permissible.
Okay.
There's no issues, no issues with that.
Okay.
And again, a big part of that is to calm the neighborly feud here, and so that no longer does the neighbor need to, or in this case, the appellant, need to be the one to, unless he sees something laringly, it's.
I do have one quick question.
Yeah, hang, hang on, I'll, I'll recognize you.
Yeah.
But let, let, let us get through this first.
So that's, that's really what it's for, so. As far as the events, how many events do we want to give an event?
Well, I, I'm, I'm not sure, we, since we don't issue permits for it, we, we, but we have to go back to the commercial operation, and, and like, right now, goat yoga's not allowed, I would put something to that effect in, in here.
So, from my experience, what we would do is require them to, anything that goes outside of this permit that's on here, apply for a special permit, and that's completely separate of the ag permit at that point, under conditions to, that we look at, and that's, that's their risk, and it's very hard to do a, a large event permit in a rural residential area. So that would be to their choice, but I think.
But I think we just said we don't do private property permits.
They're not on private property once they start parking on the street, and once they start using, there's.
If you can clarify.
Yeah, so what it talks about in the permit is, is that if you were to do an event and you would use public property for the event, so parking, I mean, we've had, we've had to have people do parking plans, or find different parking lots, or shuttle if you have a lot of people, even the city's done that with their own events, because we can accommodate parking, but we've just never done that for private property. So I mean, if somebody were to do something in our park, great example is Encinitas Street Fair, we know they use public roads, so we make them get a permit, but like the Heritage Ranch who does events at their place doesn't have to get a permit, because that's how they operate.
We don't do it, but our code doesn't preclude private property.
It does define, it does define what special event permits are, so I don't know if there's another permit on it in the code for that, because I think what Anna's saying is that this is supposed to be an ag permit with agriculture uses.
I can't have a rock concert in my backyard.
If it's a private event, you're not charging, I mean, if they're, if they're parking on a public street.
So, I mean, they're still.
But they're saying there's no parking on Fortuna.
There's still fire and safety issues, right? Capacity of, of the property, there's still public parking issues that require parking per, there's all these things that require, once you go over a capacity of a property, to, to get covered on, you can't just, I can't have 500 of my friends over for a free rock concert at my house.
No, no, you couldn't, likely the Sheriff's Department would be called, but if they're parking on public property, like on a public street, we would, we, we can't stop someone from parking on a public street.
But you can if you stay within all the legal parking and noise limits and that type of stuff, there's nothing precluding you from doing that. But I think the fundamental difference from what staff told us earlier is commercial enterprise versus non-commercial, so anybody can have a party on their property any given time, but if you may, if you advertise it and you're welcoming, you know, advertising for people to come and enjoy the goat yoga class, that, that's crossing that line clearly, and I think that's what staff told us, and so that, that's what I'm trying to make sure is explicitly understood here. So I'm trying to bring this to a close, because it's getting later and later, and we have one more item, too.
So the motion, do you want to read it back? Do we want to start there?
I can, I, I just wanted to, so right now, commercial events are prohibited, and, and we could add that as one more explicit condition, it's, it's already in the code, but I just want to make sure, and then if, we had the public hearing is still open, what I'd like to do is two minutes, two minutes to get last points, I think I can do that, and that would be fair due process.
That's permissible.
Okay, so I'll give the appellant two minutes, and then we'll close with two minutes, if there are any comments on where we're going right now, I'd love to hear them now, or if you had a new point you wanted to make.
No, no, it's perfect, and like I said, all along, I've honestly had no issues or problems at all with the ag permit as presented by the City of Encinitas and approved on this date. Of the animals, of the small-scale ag, temporary food stand, and the ag permits, what is, you know, the issue that I've got right here, this date is right there, they're advertising it. Elizabeth had mentioned that there were no, hasn't done any goat yoga events or anything in the past year, so I have a timestamp video, and you're right, I don't like to be the cop. February 8th, there it goes, that's like a month or so ago, goat yoga happening, like, just please, stop the goat yoga, and with the commercial and the, the other stuff, and just limit it to what is in the, the proposal, and I have no problems whatsoever. It's just a matter of what is in the code, and I just don't understand why, if it clearly states like no goat yoga and no youth camps, why they can still advertise and hold them? It will, it is a commercial activity, we, we can get tax records, it's going to be a business. You're telling me that they cannot charge for goat yoga, is that correct? They decide they have friends over or whatever, that's great. Once they start advertising it, goat yoga, and having goat yoga, and charging for goat yoga, that's a violation, is that correct?
I, I'm not going to respond, just finish up your time.
No, I don't know, I'm sorry.
I'll respond later.
No, that's what I would love to get, that determination. I am perf, I don't care if they're bunnies, pigs, chickens, goats, hogs, horses, llamas, you name it, right? I'm fine with all of that. Sell your farm stand, sell that, all the above, I know that we need to still figure out the easement issue, that's an entirely different conversation. I just want to ensure that the way the code is written, there is no goat yoga allowed, and there are no summer camps allowed.
Okay.
Thank you so much. That's the way the code says, right?
Say your piece, and then two minutes.
I'm done, beep, beep, I'm done.
Whether, Elizabeth, you or, yeah, either one of you can speak, you both, two minutes together.
Okay, I, I guess I would just say, help us find a way to bless the community. There are parameters, if we were on the other side of our fence in San Diego County, they have a beautiful ag ordinance to encourage urban agriculture, and I think Encinitas could take a lesson from that. Ag, I provided it to three of the four of you, I'm sorry, Bruce, I didn't share it with you, because they visited later than you did, and then I found, but anyway, it's, it's really great, because you don't have to have specific permits, we don't have to waste the city's time, this was 17 months of hard work by your staff, so it's a general thing, and it's like, we want to encourage agriculture, so what we're going to do is, anyone that's a farm that's more than two acres can, and I don't know all the specifics by heart, can hold events that are connected to their farm, that are agro-connection activities, which is everything that we do, as long as it's done within daylight hours, or like seven to five, you can put it, parameters like that. It could never be more than so many people, their limit is like 250, we're only asking for 30 here. That's, we do, we, we have one bathroom, that's kind of our limiter. So if we look to that, they've, San Diego County has already figured this out for us, we need to look to them, and you just adopt it, you can do that, your city can adopt the, the county's ordinance right now, and, but maybe even make it more limited, so that, and then you can ease into it if you want to expand it more, but it says, daylight hour, it's like number of, and, and it, there's a, like within four months, they can only, that property could only have so many events, you know, so it's not like per month or per week, because they want to make room for seasonal things, because you're a farm. So it's like within a four-month period, you couldn't have more than 20 events, or 26, or, you, you have to look at the ordinance. Is that my time?
No, I think, two things to mention, Gary's advertisement is from Yelp, we don't control Yelp, and the second is that it's very common to identify a large animal as an animal above 500 pounds.
That's what all your jurisdictions around you are doing.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
So I think, next step, maybe read back where, what we've got right now, if anybody, I'll take a shot at it, and.
Yeah, go for it.
Yeah, so, do you want to, you want to do a shot? I want to make sure, because we added some, I don't think they're in. The only reason I was going there is because I think we added two or three that weren't in there, but go ahead and, and we'll check them off.
Yeah, so it's to deny the appeal, and then what wasn't clear, did you guys want to include the conditions on page 27 that staff had recommended? The additional condition that they.
Yeah, to demonstrate compliance with the Department of Environmental Health regarding the guidelines for community garden and food safety.
Yes.
So there's that, and then to formally define, we went through the large and small animals.
Yes.
Include that, and then the section nine, or SCA nine, to remove weekly.
Yes.
And then to waive the traffic mitigation fees with the building, to tie into the building permit?
Yes.
And I think, Jim, you had not to use the fire, hook up to the water for the preparedness plan?
Yes.
Maintain the county food permits? And six code complaints checks, or more, annually?
For the first year.
For the first year, at the discretion of the city.
I think you said up to six.
Up to six.
Up to six, yeah.
Up to six. And I think you had the food permit one twice, because isn't that essentially the one that maintain?
No, mine was to make sure they have county, because there's, there's ours, and there's county, and the county to sell sometimes is different depending on what's going on.
Okay.
And then, did you guys, were we in agreeance on the 50 guests in total?
45 is what we.
45.
Yeah, and that was educational daycare accessory use to the urban ag permit with a limit of 45 total people.
And then, did also, it was mentioned this shelter modifications, was that, were you guys in agreeance on that?
I think they decided they want to leave that.
Leave that out, okay.
And then a quick question, can we, can we use the 500 pounds as a large, can we just make that a line in the sand? As a large, small animal, or do you want to define species?
I think, I think, I think in this case, that would be a good way to go, and we can go back and look at the code ordinance, I think that clearly needs to be written.
500 pounds is a good-sized animal.
It's a good-sized animal.
Yeah, you know.
If I may.
But they're, they're, they put it forward, yeah. I don't know, I mean, I'm.
Mayor Elers?
I'd like to hear what staff has to say.
I, I just wanted to state that the proposed animals that they provided us, they provided us a, a list, we all identified, we identified those as small animals.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with the 500 pounds, I do want to be there when the code enforcement Okay. I'm okay with the 500 pounds. I do want to be there when the code enforcement goes out with the scale, though. I got to watch this and get a video, so.
Walk on scale.
Can we add hours of operation, daylight hours?
I think they're on there.
Oh, are they on there already?
Yes, seven to seven, 7:00 AM, 7:00 PM.
And frequency of events would be the last one. 10 per month? Five per month? Six per month? Something of.
So. Well, I think they said it was seasonal, right? So sometimes.
Yeah, granted, some months they won't do any, but what becomes?
The max.
A, how about, negative impact on adjacent properties and owners? That's what I'm trying to say. How often is too often?
Provide a schedule not to exceed 60. I don't know, that's why I was trying to get that number, because I.
It might be because it's seasonal, you might have to give a year version, or a seasonal version.
But what if it's, what's considered an event, I guess, is like, having some kids over there considered an event? Because what if they have that kind of daily, or not daily, but like, if they have?
But I think they've got the educational daycare daily up to 45. I'm trying to put some.
Just the events.
Yeah. And we already know, commercial, and we probably should put a limit that says, "commercial operations are not allowed," that are not associated, are not an accessory used to the ag.
So I want to, I want to pause on something there. Sorry.
Keep going.
Ag permits are missing a lot of nuance, and we need to nail this down. We want to make this fair. I believe urban agriculture, part of the reason, and you touched on this, urban agriculture is about exposure of agriculture, exposure of culture, exposure of history. And I believe that summer camps fit that more than anything else I could do. So I want to make sure that that is allowed. And that's why I kept going back to the 15 max on that seven to 12 number. So I definitely want to make sure that whatever number we hit for the special events, or if we want to, if we want to, if we want to separate special events and summer camps, we could do that, too. But especially seeing people who got up here to speak, and knowing people that I know around the town who have been affected by that, I think, they're not providing corn to the Midwest, or a massive farm. Their urban agriculture is about exposure and healing and pieces like that. And that, I mean, that's, to me, that is summer camp.
Yeah, and that's the educational daycare, I believe. And that's what we're saying, it's accessory use to the ag permit with up to, right now, we're saying 45 people. I heard you say 15?
So, no, the, for a day camp, it's, for educational purposes, it says seven to 12. I'm saying we have to give her 15 and that, and we can.
Staff made it clear that we did not have to limit it, because it is an accessory use to the ag permit. Yeah. And Anna is nodding yes. So we can, we can raise that limit. And 30 was the ask, and all I said is, I want to make sure I include in the number, not only the number in the class, but everybody on site, staff included, because you have, volunteers are really part of the experience. They're gaining experience, ag experience. And so I just have a total number. It's enforceable, is the difference. Otherwise, I'm having staff get into, are you a volunteer? Are you paid? Or, you know, and I don't want to do that.
Fine with that. The, so, summer is 10 weeks, 12 weeks. So, to me, I'm assuming you do summer camp like everybody else does, as a week. So each week is, it's just day. Okay, so Wednesday sessions.
Yeah.
So, I guess, how many, how many events do you do in a summer, then, right?
I'm saying, yes, an educational daycare, they can do that every day of the week, technically.
Yeah, that's.
Are you saying, you proposing to limit that?
Well, are we going to do 300 event permits?
No, there's no, there's no permit here.
But we're allowing 300 events.
I'm limiting the size, not the frequency yet.
I think he's saying is that the, it's not a permit for the educational portion.
Right.
Like, it's not, yeah, because it's not an event. That event would be something larger, I guess, if the.
Which is why I was trying to keep that number closer to the 30, but I wanted to include the staff, and you didn't, you weren't comfortable with 40. I would prefer 40. I think that's the right number that allows for staff and class and everybody. And nobody has to go and.
It's the number of special events we have. I don't want to put them in a situation.
It's separate, yeah.
But each event can only have 40 people. So I'm, I don't want to put them in a spot where they're, they max out their number, and they have to figure out, well, how do we work around this law? Because that's what anybody would do. Or they get in a spot where they're having an event every day, because it's permitted, which I don't want to expect from other viewers, but I'm trying to make it so it's not, it's, again, we're making it clear, the neighbors happy. They're not.
So the educational daycare accessory use to urban ag permit, I would propose 40. And I think I see one, maybe one other vote there. And that, they can do technically every day. I don't think they're going to. They would go nuts. Now, that, I'm not talking about a special event. This is a daycare-type use, that is, daycare and educational, agricultural, educational use, that is part of the essence of an ag permit. It really is. Now, special events beyond that, I don't know how we limit, whether this limits it to whatever number we put it on, or, like, if they had a fundraiser for, for each, you know, what limits can we put on that? Can we? You know, it's private property, too, don't forget.
I get it, I'm just, so, it's an event.
So, I'm comfortable with putting the 40 limit. They asked for 30. We're saying 40 with volunteers and staff. That should limit the parking, that should limit the traffic. That's really where I'm trying to get to, because ultimately, I have to make that finding about, does not have a negative impact on adjacent properties, et cetera. That's what we have to do as council up here.
Correct. I agree, but the next person's going to come along and say, I can have 40 people over 365 days a week, and their neighbors are not going to be happy. So I'm trying to avoid.
And at the point it becomes a negative impact on neighboring properties, we'll be back here having a hearing about the permit, and we can pull the permit. So that's how the process works.
That's fine, if you're just trying to avoid that.
We're not going to make it, I'm trying to get a hard line there as best I can, and I think we've got some good ones. The question is, do we need any others? At this point, is it worth putting in something that says, "commercial events are prohibited," essentially including activities like goat yoga? That's the ruling currently? It'd be nice to codify it here?
Yep. So goat yoga, well, yoga or group exercise is not a permitted use in this zone.
So we've established that. We don't need to put it in here explicitly.
But again, they can have 40 people over for free. No commercial enterprise, meaning no cash is exchanged.
No, they can do it for educational, right? So it's a day camp type, or educational, agricultural, educationally.
Point is, they can do some of it to a point, as long as it's not commercial enterprise.
Much of what they're doing today, they could continue.
Sure.
Things like non-accessory uses to the ag permit is where you start drawing the line. And, you know, I suppose if you draw, you know, monster trucks with goats.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I would not consider that agricultural. And goat yoga is halfway, it's pretty far over that bridge. And so that's the line I'm trying to draw.
Okay.
Mayor Ayers?
I'm going to do it.
I just wanted to make a clarification, because Planner DeChoso said, "the hours of operation are actually between the hours of sunrise and sunset."
Okay.
"No motorized equipment shall be used before 7:00 AM and after 7:00 PM." So I just wanted to clarify that, because we had said, yeah.
Okay. So right now, I don't think I'm putting a limit on frequency of events, because the commercial events are disallowed, basically, based on the interpretation. And, but, the daycare educational use accessory to the ag permit, up to 40 people.
Yes.
Going once, going twice. Do you want to read it back?
I think we.
You got it, okay.
Captured it. Just to clarify one more time, the motion maker is Schaefer, and the seconder is Ayers, correct?
Yeah. And you've heard the old saying about those that watch laws being made, laws and sausage, speaking of agriculture, yeah, you don't want to watch either one being made. That's what you're seeing here tonight, so.
If staff could get a clarification on one of the items.
Who, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm, where's?
Fire marshal.
I thought it was God talking to me for a moment there, sorry. It's just the fire marshal. Go ahead.
God is short, so don't even break your hearts, but what do you call it? Bad joke. I just want to make a clarification on one of the items, talked about not hooking up to hydrant, and then a preparedness plan or protection plan?
Yeah, I'd like to see them, obviously, they have to have some sort of a protection plan, a fire evacuation plan, if they're having events at their, their property. And maybe the fire department could actually help them with that, to make sure that it's approval, if it's approved, if you'd be.
Which is why I wanted to define, because fire protection plan or evacuation plan can be very costly, and I don't think that would be fair to put it on for this kind of a permit, versus like a home preparedness plan, maybe, that's.
That would be great.
Simpler. And then, the whole hooking up to the hydrant, I think, is kind of redundant, because it's already in the San Diego, San Diego Water District laws and stuff.
Leaving hind.
Oh, sorry, leaving hind, yeah. It's already established in their, in their stuff, so I don't know if that needs to be in there or not.
Yeah, I think the fire department could help with that. We don't want to add any charges to this, but we do want to make sure there's accountability there. And I do want to express that, that hydrant for anybody needs to not be touched.
Correct. We encourage preparedness and all that, but not hooking up to hydrants.
And just, that's prior to building permit issuance? Is that when that's being required? Because we, it would be, it needed, need to be a defining point?
No, I would, I would give them, I'll make this generous, because I know fire department is very busy, and this will be, and we're asking them to put in some time. So I would give them till the sixth visit of code enforcement.
So not a game item for permits?
Within the year.
Yeah.
Within one year of this.
Perfect. I love that. That's great. I think that's a fair amount of time.
May I also add to the satisfaction of the Encinitas Fire Department, because you wouldn't want some schlocky home prepared, you know, an actual plan, not, we're going to escape this way. It's, you know, an actual plan.
And we want to do it in the way that the fire marshal recommended, because we don't want to add any cost, but yes.
That's what Jay said.
Yep.
And that's very standard language for us to add to conditions. So, we have a motion in a second. Do we, do we all think?
Do you not have a question?
Oh, I'm.
Another question.
Yeah, yeah, okay. You don't have a question. So can I call a question? The answer is yes. Call the question. Question, Kelly, unanimous. Thank you. Now, if you could leave quickly and quietly, we have one more item. And, or if you stay, you got to stay for the whole thing. Just kidding.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, really.
Ready, one, two, three.
So, thank you. Thank you for staying late. Okay, so we will carry on and move on to, and if you can take the conversations out in the hallway, out into the lobby, please, as quickly as possible.
Approve.
This is early for us.
Oh, oh, good. We need, phew. Yeah, really, yeah. Yeah, we're all looking forward to the rock concert at Jim's house. Rock concert at Jim's house, yeah. We just said he could have unlimited.
Apparently.
Playing on his roof.
Yeah. Okay, with that, I think we can move on to item 10B, which is City Council, Direction to Authorize Staff to Initiate a General Plan Amendment and Local Coastal Program Amendment to Remove the Requirement to Prepare a Specific Plan in the Land Use Element for Eight Self-Realization Fellowship (SRF) Properties, Including the Associated Land Use Policy Maps and Text Revisions and an Amendment to the Downtown Encinitas Specific Plan. Contact person is Associate Planner Svetko.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Ayers and council members. My name is Joel Svetko, Associate Planner, and I'm here to present the Self-Realization Fellowship General Plan Amendment Initiation. With me today is Patty Anders, Planning Manager, and Anna Colomusi, interim Development Services Director. First, here's some policy background. The Encinitas General Plan consists of seven elements that guide city policy. The land use element, which lays out the city's development and land use policies, includes a requirement for the Self-Realization Fellowship to develop a specific plan before any substantial expansion or change of use can occur on eight of their 14 properties. When the city's general plan was adopted in 1989, the specific plan requirement and overlay were carried over from the County of San Diego's general plan. As the land use element is a planning policy document under EMC Chapter 30.00, it is subject to the requirements stipulated in that section. As you can see on this map, the SRF specific plan area outlined in yellow, covers eight of their 14 parcels, south and east of the downtown Encinitas specific plan area, near Swami's Beach, including four developed properties west of Coast Highway 101, and four undeveloped properties east of 101. Two large parcels on the bluff contain the Meditation Gardens and the Golden Lotus Towers. Self-Realization Fellowship is a legal non-conforming use in the public semi-public zone, in accordance with EMC Chapter 30.76 Nonconformities. SRF cannot expand or change the use or structure in a way that increases the zoning inconsistency. As evidenced by the letters from SRF's Legal Counsel, Ari Spangler, included as attachments two and three to the staff report, SRF would like to remodel their monastic kitchen. Without the requirement to develop a specific plan, renovation and expansion of their kitchen will still be subject to design review and will require permits, including a major use permit per the zoning matrix, and a coastal development permit per coastal commission regulations. As it stands, SRF can only increase a structure's floor area by 10% without a coastal development permit, which would require adoption of a specific plan to acquire. That specific plan would be subject to a citywide vote under EMC Chapter 30.00. The Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, known as R-LUPA, was passed by Congress in the year 2000. R-LUPA prohibits enforcement of land use regulations that substantially burden religious exercise unless the government demonstrates the land use regulation serves a compelling governmental interest and is the least restrictive means to achieve that interest. The law also requires equal treatment of religious and secular uses. Staff proposes a general plan amendment to remove the specific plan requirement from the text of the land use element, remove the specific plan overlay from the land use policy map, shown here, and remove a reference to, in the general plan index. In addition, staff proposes a downtown Encinitas specific plan amendment to remove reference to the SRF specific plan area in Chapter 2.2 issues. The proposed amendments would also amend the city's local coastal program, so a local coastal program amendment is proposed as well. Encinitas Municipal Code Chapter 30.00 must be complied with in order to undertake these amendments. The land use element and specific plans are deemed planning policy documents under Section 3 of the chapter. As the amendments proposed for initiation do not increase density or the number of parcels, change zoning, increase height limits or commercial square footage, or repeal any planning policy documents, this action would be considered a regular amendment under Section 4 of the chapter. As a regular amendment, the actions proposed for initiation would not. for initiation would not require a public vote to be adopted, but rather would be adopted by ordinance per Section 5 of the chapter. Staff will follow the general plan amendment, specific plan amendment, and local coastal program amendment procedures to develop an ordinance and usher it through the public noticing, public review, and citizen participation plan processes, followed by public hearings at the Planning Commission and City Council. If the ordinance were to be adopted by the City Council, staff would then submit it to the California Coastal Commission for review of the local coastal program amendment. If the Coastal Commission were to approve the amendments, staff would then amend the documents. Note on Senate Bill 4, known as Affordable, the Affordable Housing on Faith and Higher Education Land Act of 2023, allows religious organizations to override local zoning to develop affordable housing by right. Qualifying projects can build up to 40 units per acre and must be 100% affordable with at least 80% affordable to low-income households. Applicants would also be eligible for density bonus and reductions in development standards and parking ratios. Regardless of whether the specific plan requirement and overlay are retained or removed, SRF would still have the potential to utilize SB4. The law makes clear that it overrides any local land use regulations. The law also has exceptions that may render any number of SRF's properties ineligible. An application would have to be submitted and reviewed to determine eligibility. Aside from SB4, the public semi-public zone allows a caretaker dwelling unit accessory to the principal use to be permitted by right, except for in the ecological resource open space park zone. All other residential uses are prohibited. So, with that, staff recommends adoption of Resolution Number 2025-22, authorizing amendments to the general plan, downtown Encinitas specific plan, and local coastal program to remove the specific plan overlay and requirement for SRF to develop a specific plan from the eight properties listed in the resolution, which is included as attachment 1 to the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are available to answer any questions.
Any questions of clarification? And do we have public speakers?
We have one.
One?
Ari Spangler.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for staying here tonight. I know it's late. I am just mainly here available for any questions. I think that staff did a pretty good job about describing what our request is tonight. And primarily, the Self-Realization Fellowship is interested in slightly expanding its kitchen, and so that's what brought us here, I think about eight years ago, with the request to remove the specific plan requirement because it creates an undue burden on them and it could potentially require voter approval as well, which is not a requirement that's applied to any other institutional land owner. So, it violates the Religious Land Use and Institutional Persons Act as well. I think their immediate plan is only to remodel the kitchen. I don't think there are any other immediate plans in the future, and they would still obviously be subject to the Coastal Act and all other zoning regulations. And the monastics are here tonight. They stuck around. So, if you have any questions about their plans, they're here to answer.
Yeah. I probably have a couple of questions, if, nothing major. Was there ever, and you might know somebody that might know this, used to work for the county many years ago, was there ever a use permit for the religious use on this property?
Uh.
Under county in particular, predating the city?
I don't believe so. I think that the, I'm not positive, but I think that the structure is predated when the county cared. I think the previous zoning was kind of up in the air and allowed any use.
Yeah. Bill, Bill might, Bill Weedman might know because he was the county planner before he became our city planner and one of our early employees. So, and as recently as two years ago, I had him dig up something out of our archives and he knew where it was. Amazing. So, um, and then I, I learned something new. The S88 zoning was, this condition was something from the county carried over?
It was, and I think it was actually initially intended as a protection for SRF, but it just became more of a burden over time.
So, uh, Councilmember San Antonio.
Hi.
Hi.
I just, from what I understand from my briefing, is that you just want to remove that, this verbiage that's making everything a little bit more difficult. But, in reality, what you're doing is making, taking that verbiage away, but making it, you guys will just be subject to, if you want to build something, or you'll be subject to our city, you know, ordinances and whatnot.
Exactly. Yeah. So, I think that most of the properties that are owned by SRF are currently zoned public semi-public. So, we would still be subject to all that and the coastal regulations as well.
Yeah. And I, and I think, just to clarify, I think all the ones that are in the proposed, the originally proposed specific land are public semi-public. There may be some others that were acquired out of the 14, but certainly the eight in front of us are all public semi-public.
I believe so. I, there, is that correct?
Yeah, I think I checked it too.
Okay.
And staff confirmed.
Yeah, I was a little confused about the summit property.
So, oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember O'Hara.
So, there's no, so if we do this change, it still requires all the general major use permit, coastal development permits. I saw that, right? That's correct. Same as it would if, either way, it just takes off this one stipulation. It's the only place in the city currently that has this specification? That's correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. What happens if they decide to sell some of it? Like SB4, this current zone, what happens with that?
They can always sell it, and they would still be subject to the underlying public semi-public. And in terms of SB6, if the overlay is present or not, they are still, if the proposal, you know, meets the criteria of SB4, they would still be eligible. Having the overlay doesn't in any way affect their ability to utilize SB4.
Okay. You said SB6 the first time. You meant SB4. Okay.
I told you, I told you. It's late and I might slurp.
Yeah, sorry about that. I just wanted to make sure SB6 wasn't sneaking in here too.
So, someone comes along and offers them an astronomical money, amount of money to divide the property. It doesn't go to SB4 anymore. What does it become and what happens to that property? Say, the summit property. Somebody wants to have an ocean view.
Yeah, if it's still zoned public semi-public and the overlay is removed, it would be more onerous on them because they would just be, they would have to do a rezone because right now that public semi-public only allows one caretaker unit. So, anything that would increase density and trigger that major amendment would require a vote of the people.
Okay. That's actually a good thing, right? Yep. Okay. And then.
Yeah, Prop. A has a condition of changing zones so that no shell game could be played.
No, I'm just asking the questions because this is, this is.
Oh, it's good.
We don't want to, we don't want to make a mistake doing the right thing for somebody else. We want to make sure it works for everybody. Uh, denser requirement currently is for clergy and caretakers of the facilities, and that's why it's zoned for the 100% affordable and lower income. Is that correct? Or, or what am I?
I'm sorry. Could you ask that again, please?
So, currently, the denser requirement is for clergy, and I may be using these terms wrong. I apologize. Clergy or monks, in this case, the caretakers and the caretakers of the facility. That's what the, the allowed density extra building would be for or considered?
Yes.
Okay. So, the, beyond that, they would have to file for something different. So, they can only build for religious uses. I'm just going through my list here. I'm just checking things off.
Yeah.
Okay. And all allowable land use is for church facilities, period. Like, they couldn't decide they wanted to open a store and put that on there, or is that, and?
Yeah. As Joel showed one slide, the permitted uses under public and semi-public are extremely limited.
Okay. Perfect. I just wanted to get all that clarified. Thank you. I'm, I'm good.
And then, just a quick question about the, their housing. You guys talked about the very low and low income. Would, would those, because I think we talked about this as well, but they wouldn't count towards any of our housing numbers, right, because of?
If they.
They're not open to the public?
Oh, if they propose new housing?
If they did the new housing under the very low income specifically for their, for their staff, if you will, it wouldn't, it, it wouldn't be counted for our RENA numbers, would it?
Probably not, but I would want to take a closer look, because if there's any unit count that I could get, I would want to capture that.
Of course, we, that's my point. But, but the, I think, I think we, we tried to talk about this when we had a conversation. It may not count specifically because it's only, it'd be only for their staff and it's not open to the public.
The only reason I would want to do a little more digging is because of SB4, and there are these new provisions on religious facilities. So, I would want to be as creative and take a detailed, you know, deep dive to see if there's any ability.
That's good to hear. We're all on the same page. Thank you.
Anybody, anybody else? Yeah, I'm going down on my, my list of questions, and I was just taking a quick look at the use matrix. Yeah, this, this, in my opinion, is something that's long overdue. It, it's an artifact from long ago from the county and, and, yeah, I, I feel like we're fully protected and that we, and, and I, to the point that I believe we should sponsor this GPA, and this should, this should not be a burden on SRF. So, um, so I'll, I'll move approval if, in the interest of time.
Second.
Who's the second? Marco San Antonio seconded that? Yeah, I'm trying to think. Is there anything else we need? Yeah. Just anything else staff needs from just approval of the recommendation?
That, that's correct. Yeah, approval of the recommendation to initiate the amendments.
With this change, you'll still carve pumpkins at Halloween?
But that's not part of the condition here. So, removing conditions. So, yeah, and, and thank you for being such great citizens and community members for so many years, and you're part of the fabric, and we love that. So, with that motion and a second, and amazingly, at 11:25, nobody wants to speak. Did, yeah.
Motion carries unanimously.
And sorry about making you wait. So, so with that, we will move on to, there are no, the C10C, we took off the agenda, 11, there are no informational items, there are no 12. We're on to city council member reports pursuant to AB 1234.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report.
I met with NCTD Marketing Group this week. We, we covered a lot of things. We built out our, our work plan for 2025, '26. Lots of exciting things coming down. We'll be working on microtransit. We'll be working on growth of services and adjustments. And it's a lot of really exciting things in that area of the world. So, I'm thrilled to be reporting on that.
Okay. And I've attended the Encina Wastewater Authority Board Meeting today. We adopted a, a trial new billing method for the next year that moves this to monthly from quarterly. And what this does is reduces the amount of cash Encina will have to hold in order to meet their cash flow, which means the member agencies like us have to give them less cash, and reduce it from around 11 million down to 7 million. So, it's pretty, pretty sizable. We're gonna run it for a year, see whether it needs tweaking, and then we could adopt it. It returned, as I said, it returns the excess cash to the member agencies like us. We also approved several other changes in scope on some contracts on building maintenance and improvement as Encina Wastewater catches up on some deferred maintenance. And then we actually initiated a surplus land act declaration on 10,000 square feet. So, it's a pretty small parcel of vacant land. They own the south parcel there. It's a huge vacant lot, and it's gonna be used leased, not sold, leased for energy storage. And this all fits into the long-term water reuse plan and energy.
Fire plan now?
It turns out they're Ferris batteries, base batteries, not lithium, so they don't have that problem. It, it came up today. And that's my report. City manager report.
I promise I'll make it quick. So, I just want to let you know that the Parks, Recreation, Cultural Arts Department has won some awards. We won the 2024 California Park and Rec Society Award of Excellence. The first one was for the Pacific View Art Center in Excellence in Design, so Facility Design. We won one for the Cyclovia Encinitas Open Street Event in Creating Community Award of Excellence category. And Quaid Kelly, one of our youth commissioners, was chosen to be recipient of Champion of the Community. So, we received three awards at the CPRS Conference this year, and we will present those awards to city council. They'll have a representative come, and we will do that at a meeting. So, I just wanted to let you know we won three awards. So, congratulations, Parks, Rec, and Cultural Arts.
Awesome. City attorney?
I think I've spoken enough this evening.
Well, we appreciate it. We appreciate the input and keeping us within the legal bounds. And city clerk, nothing to report. And with that, we will adjourn.